We're going to officially start the meeting even though we know two of our board meetings are circling the parking lot looking for a place to park. So, we won't start our presentation at that till they come inside, if you don't mind. Then you don't have to repeat. Roll call.
Ms. Matoye?
Here.
Ms. Flure? Ms. Black?
Here.
Ms. Yelsey?
Here.
Ms. Bartow?
Here.
Ms. Anderson? Ms. Snell?
Here.
Dr. Navarro?
Here.
Okay.
You have no cards.
I have no cards, but when we go from here into there...
Yes, and before we go on, we should read this now.
Before we...I should read this now. Regarding closed session, it is on the International School for Science and Culture Proposition 39 request. So, when we adjourn to closed session, that is the topic. I call the meeting to order. We didn't have any...no report out, so we'll have our opening ceremonies, a moment of reflection, and the flag salute led by Alex Kurmane from Corona Del Mar.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we need to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion?
So, move.
Mrs. Black moved, Mrs. Yelsey seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm going to abstain from the abstentions. So, I'm just letting the board know that I'm just doing...
Abstaining.
I'm abstaining from abstentions. We need to adopt the minutes of April 23rd. Is there a motion?
No move.
Mrs. Yelsey moved. Is there a second?
Mrs. Black seconded.
You tried, Mrs. Bartow. I saw that. Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Black seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Ooh, good stuff. We have recognition. Ms. Saunders and Ms. Anderson.
Just go stand.
I'll do this right this year. Good evening, President Matoye, board members, Dr. Navarro and cabinet. I would like to thank you for recognizing our CSEA Chapter 18 scholarship recipients. CSEA Chapter 18 awards two $500 scholarships every year. Our scholarship committee included Troy Hall, Gary Logan, Rochelle Lider, Eleanor Reberden, Stu Tedford. Our first recipient is Nicholas Santoro, son of Anita Santoro, and she's an ASB Accounting Assistant at Corona Del Mar High School.
I'm going to be reading part of Nicholas's application, his kind of introduction. Throughout my life, my goal has been supported mainly by my mom. She has devoted numerous hours and extreme amount of money to allow me to pursue my passion of ice hockey. She has taken enough debt and stress upon her shoulders trying to support me. Now, it's my turn to support my own goals and ambitions. I've worked hard throughout high school and choose to attend Cal State Long Beach. My alma mater. Go Sharks! The financial support I have been awarded is what currently pays my education and athletics. Without it, I wouldn't be able to do either. As I get older, my life goals have changed numerous times, but I believe this is normal for all human beings. Currently, a goal of mine is to be successful at my new coaching job. As a lifetime player, I take great pride in being able to teach kids how awesome ice hockey is, and I'd like to continue the growth in the sport of Southern California. Another goal of mine is to develop my own passion even further and become an even better player than I already am. As a first year on Long Beach State's hockey team, it is now a dream to win the American Collegiate Hockey Association Championship because my school has never won it before, and it would be an incredible milestone. My last goal that I currently want to achieve is graduating from college. The financial support CSEA provides would go further toward my education and to help prevent myself from being the burden of future debt. Being able to graduate college with as little debt as possible is an ideal goal, but that's...but let's be honest, it's relatively unrealistic. So, congratulations. Pam, you should be...Pam and Eleanor, you should be in it. Or at least Pam then.
Our next recipient is Danielle Dickey, daughter of Pamela Dickey, a special ed instructional assistant at Costa Mesa High School. And she is still at Wilson. She does the after-school program. She was trying to get over here, but she's still waiting for kids to be picked up. But I will...and this is her mom. And I'll just read her essay that she gave us. When it comes to writing or talking about myself, I will be honest, it comes hard to do and makes me completely nervous. I never know what to say, remember something else to add later that would have made it even better. Since I was in elementary school, I could remember looking at teachers and my family members who taught us well, thinking that is what I wanted to do when I grow up. As I continued to grow, the calling to become a teacher only grew stronger. When I was in eighth grade, I took a chance and applied to Early College High School. I honestly believe it was one of the best decisions I have ever made. If I did not, I would have been drowned in a sea of people at any other school, not being able to shine and receive the opportunities I did. I was a part of the Journalism Club, Yearbook of the Year for the Year, National Honor Society ASB, serving as secretary when I was a senior. I was given the opportunity to be a student board member my junior and senior year. I was honored with rewards at the end of each year, being Student of the Year and receiving the Daughters of the American Revolution Citizenship Award. During my senior year, I applied to multiple schools and got into a school that felt like home when I visited California State University, San Marcos. Although I loved the location and made many friends, I did not have the easiest time there. Thus began the delay of graduating. I moved back home to continue on my goal to become a teacher. Nothing is going to stop me. I attended Golden West College, and I graduated with my AA spring of 218. During my three years at Golden West, I knew I would prefer to work with older kids than elementary, which I ordinarily planned. This insight allowed me to change my major to English to pursue...sorry. A single subject for either high school or middle school setting. I transferred to Cal State Fullerton and have completely fallen in love with the people and my campus. The short time I've been at Fullerton, I've been able to appreciate the entire faculty in my college and educators throughout. Within my last two semesters, I plan to rejoin this SCTA, which I was part of at Cal State University, San Marcos, I guess, and get more involved in the school as much as possible. I am very proud that I can say that I've been on the dean's list every semester so far, each semester having 18 units, and plan to continue to begin on it when I graduate in spring of 2020. My goal is to apply for the credential program at Fullerton and use my internship at one of Newport Mesa's high schools, either Early College or Costa Mesa. I have attended Newport Mesa from kindergarten to graduation. Not only has teaching been my dream, but teaching in this school district. I have been blessed with the chance to work with the after-school program project success now called Project Kids Connect while I attend school. My plan is to graduate from Cal State Fullerton while on the dean's list, attends Cal State's Fullerton's credential program, and using my student teaching time at one of NMUSD's high schools, working with former teachers. Once I graduate from credential program, my education is not stopping with my bachelor's. I plan to continue to get my master's in English, studying one of the many amazing literacy geniuses such as James Joyce and Virginia Woolf. I look forward to never being able to tell people that I'm not going to work at school for rest of my working career. I will have a job that I deeply and truly love. I will be able to inspire and support the students that come through my door, hoping to make a lasting impact and having them come back to tell more of their accomplishments. Thank you for taking the time to read this, my accomplishments and goals about myself.
Thank you.
Thank you. I like good news. It's the fun part of our job. This is wonderful. Alrighty, student board members' reports. Alex, you get to start.
So, as you all know, AP exams are fully underway right now.
How special.
I know. And teachers have been especially awesome these last two weeks with providing...
Oh, you're fine.
Sorry.
I was letting Mrs. Flure know I was moving in.
But I was saying that these teachers have been especially great, providing last-minute review sessions, and I actually personally just came from one. And the teachers have just done a great job preparing students for these exams, and we're especially thankful this time of the year. And then athletically, as our spring season has finally reached its conclusion, we had a really successful year overall, but especially for boys lacrosse, boys volleyball, my personal favorite, boys tennis. Boys lacrosse and boys volleyball each reached the CIF semifinals for Division I, and boys tennis reached the CIF quarterfinals after achieving an undefeated record in league matches. And then last week was our Teacher Appreciation Week, and ASB went through the teacher parking lot and cleaned all the car windows with Windex and wipes and just...
Wow!
It was pretty cool. And then we also left little notes of gratitude for each of the cars there, just showing how thankful we truly are for all the teachers. It was really sweet. It was just a good experience. And then beyond that, this last weekend, our drum line and cheerleaders helped celebrate the Special Olympics athletes at the Newport Beach Civic Center. That was another awesome thing. And then lastly, our CDM Drama Department performed their spring play, Thirty-Nine Appropriate Ways to Get Away with Murder this last weekend. It was good. Yeah, it was great.
Thank you. Wonderful. Isaiah.
Good evening. My name is Isaiah Murphy. I'm from Costa Mesa High School. So, as Alex said, and I'm sure we're all going to be reiterating it, we're in the middle of AP season. And I just wanted to recognize all, again, all the great stuff that the teachers at our school are doing. I've had...every one of my teachers has had a breakfast prepared for us. They've gone out. Like, my AP Gov teacher, Mr. Fisher, was there at 6:30, and he got us all donuts, and he had bagels and drinks and stuff just to make sure that we had energy to get through the test.
Carbs.
And I know I'm not in the class, but Ms. Ross, our AP Physics teacher, had shirts made for all of her kids. Yeah. And so, that's going on right now. We just had our AP Calculus AB test and Human Geography test today. Yeah, lots of fun. I took the AP Calculus one. It was brutal. So, on Thursday, we're going to...the top 16 students of our class are going to be recognized with the Les Miller Scholarship Award at the Vulcan Warehouse. So, that'll be very exciting. And in terms of sports, the swim team banquet is tonight. The boys volleyball banquet will be tomorrow, and the cheer banquet will be Thursday. So, clearly, it's the end of the season. And also, baseball today, just won their game, will be advancing to CIF. We're going to be playing on Saturday at 3:15 at UC Riverside. So, that's very exciting. I believe Mr. Baumeister said it was our first time since 1962 that we've advanced.
Wow.
He was not coaching then either.
Okay. He was playing, yeah.
So, past events. So, just yesterday, actually, our ASB won the National School Tradition Award for our Spread the Love Week, where we got a big...I don't know if we've gotten the trophy yet, but we are going to be getting a big glass trophy and a $3,000 grant for our program.
Outstanding.
And all of our seniors received their Senior Exit Project panels yesterday and their time of presentation, so that's impending. And upcoming, our Senior Exit Project presentations are going to be Monday, May the 20th, and Tuesday, the 21st, and during which our school's going to be operating on a minimum day schedule so we can just knock them all out and be done. And on May 21st, our magical choir, well, actually, all of our choir programs, will be performing our annual spring concert. The theme this year is Liberty and Justice for All, where the choir is going to be tracking the history of the civil rights movement from the birth of our nation to its present day. We invite you all to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah.
I have a question for Isaiah. Does that sweatshirt mean anything?
Yeah. Going to Berkeley next year.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Go Bears! Jennifer?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Neri from Estancia High School. And one of our academic updates, how Isaiah said, AP testing, it will be concluding this week, finally. And also, we are gearing up for S-Back and Cast, and then also Senior Project Presentations, which is the most exciting part for senior year. And our baseball team didn't make it to finals, but they did make it to quarterfinals for the first time in 30 years, so it's pretty interesting. Also, we celebrated Lunch Hero Day with our administration, serving lunch, and they had to wear hairnets, gloves, and aprons, and they served food to the students, which is interesting because they were having the time of their life as well. They were bumping up music, and they were just serving funny. And also, we had an Adidas School Walls competition, where there was 10 students that had to draw live a superhero scene, and five of our students are going to be in Adidas Schools this upcoming, I think in June, and they will be meeting professional artists and learning more about how to draw better and how to develop more of their skills, which is an interesting opportunity, especially for one of my friends, that she has an artistic talent, and she got the opportunity to do that. And then we're also going to do Love Costa Mesa Day on Saturday and Campus Beautification. And that's it.
Busy stuff going on. Perfect. Sakai from Newport Harbor High School today. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sakai Malanado, and I'll be filling in for Rafa from Newport Harbor High School. So, as everybody has said, our AP exams are wrapping up this week, and I couldn't be more happy about that. In a good way, obviously. It's really bittersweet knowing that I'll have no more AP tests for the remainder of the high school, my high school journey, so it's obviously a little bit more mellow now. This weekend, our boys volleyball team won the CIF title, and we had an awesome student and parent section for the final game. It's very hard to get Newport Harbor to have school spirit, but honestly, our ASB and just us coming together as a school and supporting our team from Newport Harbor all the way to Sarita's College definitely shows a commitment and our love for our school. What's it called? We are currently playing today at home for the next title, so hopefully, let's go Sailors. Some of our IB Business students went to the international competition for DECA in Orlando and did an amazing job. Rodrigo Lozano and Kevin Hernandez, both seniors, my best friends, at NHHS, were able to place top 10 overall in Startup Business Plan.
Wow.
Yes. Actually, Kevin Hernandez, in class, designed a company called Simple Straws. And at first, it started as a class project, but then he developed it into an actual business. And now, he is, you know, moving forward with that and plans to continue it and hopefully get sponsored by a company and work in collaboration with them. Also, Culture Week is a go for next week. What's it called? We are having different days themed for different cultures. What's it called? There will be different clubs on campus hosting a different culture every day. For example, I am the co-president of Latinos Unidos on campus at NHHS, and we will be hosting a Concha sale, as well as Mexican candy and a piñata. So, it's just like to put people in the position of like what it is like to be in a Latino culture. What's it called? We have also...we are...we were also given the lovely opportunity to host in our school's theater a film titled Part of Water. This is a film...this film is a tribute to Ben Carlson, a Newport Beach lifeguard who sadly passed away. And this weekend is when this film will be airing at our school, Saturday, different times. So, just, that's pretty much it, yeah. Thank you. Hope you guys can come see it.
Thank you very much. Estefania? That's Lucy. Lucy, sorry, Lucy.
Good evening. I'm Lucy Demetrick, representing Early College High School. Fortunately, we are not in AP season right now, but college finals do start next week, so we are all crossing our fingers for that. We are excited that our school was recently named as a U.S. News and World Report National Best High School in their listing of national best high schools for 2019. Last week, May 7th, we held our first-ever college signing day for our senior class. It was a very big momentous day and an excellent opportunity for our seniors to stick their college logos onto our giant poster and sign it. We are proud that among 48 seniors, we received over 110 college applications...sorry, acceptances.
Wow.
Yes. I am very relieved to say that our seniors just completed our Senior Project Presentations, today, actually. And we presented our presentations at...sorry, in front of a panel of community members that volunteered. Next week, at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, May 22nd, we'll be recognizing over 90 students at our annual ECHS Awards Night. This year, we are holding the event at the Orange Coast College Robert B. Moore Theater, the same theater that we actually use for our graduation ceremony. The following week, we'll be holding our graduation ceremony at 3:30 PM on Thursday, May 30th. I am very excited for that. Lastly, this past Friday was our last assembly of the year, one of our favorites, actually, the talent show, which was followed by the revealing of the house champion and actually our first talent show winner. This year marked the first time that the Sea Dragons won the House Champion Award in seven years, so...
Yay!
It was a very big moment. Also, at the end of the assembly...sorry, at the beginning of the assembly, the Costa Mesa Sanitary Department presented our school with a check for a year-long effort in collecting batteries in response to reduce the number of heavy metals and toxic chemicals in our environment. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Lucy. Wow. Good stuff happening at our schools. Harbor Council PTA, Ms. Black.
Thank you for having me. Julie is up north...oh, sorry.
Perfect.
Julie's up north visiting her son, and I'm filling in, so bear with me, please. I want to thank all of you for attending our Harbor Council luncheon last Monday. It was great. Sorry if we didn't have time to personally greet each and every one of you, but I hope you understand.
You fed us.
There were a few things going on. But anyway, we were glad to have all of you there. All of our PTA schools were in attendance but one.
Hmm.
So, we felt that was very good. Very good. And we had 181 attendees. So, yeah. All our tables were full. So, anyway, thanks all for coming. Tomorrow starts our State PTA Convention, which is in Monterey this year.
Lovely.
So, we will be leaving...that's why Julie's up visiting her son, because it's right there in the neighborhood. We have seven PTA members attending. Julie, Vicky Waldo, Missy Rakestraw, myself, and then Early College High School is sending Noel Kruger and their new PTA president, Amber...and I don't...her name?
Amber.
It's not Amber Snyder. She's from...
It's Andrew Graham.
Thank you. So, and I couldn't get ahold of anybody to tell me who it was. Amber Graham, welcome. I will meet her tomorrow. And then Back Bay is sending Cynthia Strassman, their PTA president. So, hopefully, we will be gathering lots of good information, getting a lot of training, recharging our batteries, and it's supposed to rain and be cold, but we'll, you know, soldier through. June 1st is a Saturday, and that is the Fourth District PTA's training. For any PTA members, if you guys feel like you need some PTA training, you are more than welcome to sign up. It's, I think, $10. And it's right in our backyard at Vanguard University.
Over.
So, very convenient. So, we're hoping to get a lot of our new and returning PTA members to sign up and attend. And then June 3rd is our year-end Harbor Council meeting, and we will be having a mini-training at that meeting. We're inviting, of course, our presidents, who come anyway, to bring along...if they're an outgoing president, to bring the new president. And they can also bring two additional board members, secretary, treasurer, their choice. And we will have some mini-training. We're going to have them be able to hear from Dr. Navarro and the assorted cabinet members who always come and give us fabulous information. And we'll be getting our new boards ready to hit the road on July 1st and be starting a new year. It's just absolutely unbelievable that we're at this time of year already. So, anyway, thank you.
It was by a blink. Thank you very much. Alrighty, we have a...we're now entering our reports stage. By the way, those of you that are just riveted to our normal agendas and how they look, we are moving things around a bit so that we can get more of the good stuff and good information out to the public that's also besides that on our video, but those of you that are here, you can actually hear the good stuff instead of the mundane stuff at the end. So, right after these reports will become our cabinet reports. So, early college high school video. Mrs. Franco.
Good evening, President Matoye, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, cabinet and guests. I'm Annette Franco. I'm the Public Relations Officer for our district, and I am here with Dr. Dave Martinez, who is the principal of Early College High School, and we would like to present you with a promotional video that we did for Early College High School. I'm not going to tell you much about it because the goal is for the video to tell you. So, if you have any questions, Dr. Martinez and I can answer them after the video. And magic. Good timing.
What timing?
I chose to transfer to ECHS because it teaches us how to evolve into that college lifestyle and those classes. So, we really learn being here from experience.
You get to know each other very, very well. Of the 47 other seniors that I know, I have a great sense of what their personality is, and they have a great sense of mine.
I felt the tight-knit community. I really loved that. We had this personal one-to-one connection with the teachers. The teachers actually got to know you. Something I'm very grateful for is this college prep.
Well, Early College High School is a great opportunity for our students to be able to get a leg up on college, to have the ability to come to a small high school. Our class sizes are 25 students or lower. We have a staff that really loves the kids. We want to see our kids succeed and be able to get to that next level, which is college for them.
There are midterms, there are finals, there are one semester college classes, and students are learning what it takes to be a successful student in a college class, and when they are working hard, it is paying off, and it really prepares them for college success.
Each of the students have made a decision to take a different path for their education, and knowing that it might not be easy, but that in the long run, it's going to be a good decision for them. I've been a part of the faculty here at Early College High School for almost 13 years, and I've seen it grow and blossom into the program that it is today. The teachers genuinely care about the students here. They really want to see them succeed.
They get to take community college classes and up-level and gain a lot of experience. The students are a lot more career-oriented and college-oriented.
The thing I'm most proud of with both of my kids coming here to school is to see how much they've blossomed, how much they've grown, how they have matured. When they go to college, they're going to be ready.
Everyone's here invested in kids, and they want to put everybody here in the best position to be successful.
So it's that nurturing environment that we have here that I feel makes us special.
Unless you guys have any questions, we just wanted to feature this for you. It is on our district YouTube site. Link to our YouTube channel is on the homepage of our district website. And of course, Dr. Dave Martinez has blasted it all over the place as well.
So have we.
Well, actually, you just answered my question. I was going to say, okay, so what are we doing with it now? Okay, so it's on our website, it's, you're blasting it because I think we'll all share it and...
And we've also promoted it on district social media channels.
Perfect, okay.
And we'll come back to you in a few weeks with another video.
Can't wait. That's a tease.
Before we move on to, you might need to be not too far, before we move on to our next item, Pamela has arrived and so I would love, I'm sorry, Nicole. Danielle, I can read. Danielle, I have benefited from Newport Mesa. Danielle is here and we would love to have a picture taken. So Mrs. Sanderson, if you can sneak down there and we can all applaud you, Danielle, because you did such a great job. Oh yeah, Mom, you come up too. I know, I'm sorry.
Danielle, so you were a student board member?
Oh, that's right. And thank you for waiting for the kids because I know what that's like when Mom hasn't picked them up yet. That's very frustrating because I've been the mom, so I know how that is. Alrighty, our next report is on 6th through 12th grade History and Social Science Framework. Mr. Drake.
You know, I have a point of personal privilege or whatever.
Mrs. Snow wants to talk.
Yeah, I'm wondering if any of the students have AP tests tomorrow. I wonder if we should release them.
You're not going to hurt my feelings if you need to go.
If you haven't yet, if you need to leave, this is the time of year we don't get mad. You should be studying while you're here. And that's why we put a past president down there with the kids.
Well, anybody can leave.
We aren't going to check to see if you're enrolled at a test tomorrow. Mr. Drake.
All right, President Matoye, Dr. Navarro, cabinet, guest, it really is an honor to be here tonight to represent an enormous amount of work by our teachers and administration and support staff to get to this point, to share with you the results of our 6th through 12th grade History and Social Studies adoption process. I'd also be remiss just to not mention some critical people in the audience who helped the process. We have Artosas, Jackie Washington and Chris Manning. And we have Ms. Nicole Gilbertson from UCI History Project, who was also integral in helping us move this process along.
Thanks for being here, that's nice.
Thank you for extending your day now even longer.
That's right. So I won't go into all the dirty details as I have in the past. I think you understand what our process is about in relation to building capacity around really analyzing high-quality materials and ultimately making a recommendation to you of high-quality materials for our teachers and students. But I think it is important to recognize the enormous amount of work that our staff puts into this. I'd like to say it's a six-month progress or process, but actually, it's about, this one was about a 15-month process. We started in February of last year with our steering committee spending five days, really digging in and understanding what the shifts are in relation to History, Social Studies and how those present in, or can present in materials and building that lens from which we'll analyze the materials. They spent five days, February through May of last year, doing that. There were then two days that that group then dug into their individual grade level options for adoption and dug into those materials and went through a process of analyzing just to winnow down to what they wanted to pilot. So there were two days of some pretty intense conversations and so forth there to do that work. Once they narrowed the process down, we brought in now additional teachers to actually pilot. And so there were three additional days for those teachers, along with the steering committee members, in building up their lens and understanding what we were going to be looking for and analyzing and collecting evidence on as we pilot. And then the pilots got here. So we ran two six-week pilot processes and prior to each of those, publishers came in, gave a half-day presentation on their materials in relation to where everything is located and really how to best utilize the materials to move instruction forward. And then the second half of those days were given back to those teachers to then dig in and plan their units of study for that six-week pilot. And remember, throughout this entire six weeks, weekly, they're documenting evidence of alignment that they then come back and use on the days of evaluation. And those were two more days that they spent. The first part of that day was really analyzing the evidence and making sure that it was evidence and not opinion. So they went through some calibration of evidence and then each individual teacher who was part of the pilot went through and used that evidence to actually evaluate the materials and ultimately, all of that data was shared in the final day of consensus with the teachers. And what's important to think about in relation to consensus is we're not voting in there, we're really making sure that everybody's voice is involved, that the will of the group, you know, really comes to the forefront and that people are able to make a proposal for adoption or at least recommendation based off of the will of the group, not necessarily individual wants and needs. Just to share a bit about the shifts that have, that really were the focus of our analysis. Not a ton has changed, if you ask History, Social Studies teachers, other than it's in, it's now in our frameworks for teaching History, Social Studies. So content still is one of the driving forces in relation to alignment and that is the content of the different historical subjects are what drives our instruction. The other thing to remember in this though, the difference being that now it's not content as the sole driver, but all four of these shifts really are used in tandem with each other in a balanced way to deliver instruction. So when we talk about inquiry, we're talking about organizing lessons around historical investigative questions. Literacy is kind of new, but kind of not. But there are, there is an expectation now that our History, Social Studies actually also teach literacy skills based off of the common core standards for language arts. And then finally, citizenship is also a big component of this. And that's not just to make sure kids go and vote, but it's actually about the knowledge, skills and motivation behind being a citizen. So yes, they learn how a bill becomes a law. They also learn those skills of discourse, how to recognize bias or other sides of the opinion and how to analyze that to form their own. And then finally, with those, with that and with those skills and with the knowledge that they've acquired, they're then motivated to really be contributing citizens, both, you know, as voters as well as contributors to their community. So all of that really is a balanced portion of what really high-quality materials will support in learning. So with all of those pieces in mind and just to the right here, that was just one page of about an eight-page document that teachers used to document their evidence for each of the categories that they were analyzing. So with that being said, I'm here to report after the process, our 6th, 8th, 6th through 8th grade group came to consensus and would like to recommend McGraw-Hill Education Impact California Social Studies as their set of materials moving forward. You see to the right of each of these next few slides I'm going to show you is really an image. It's not an image, it was part of our consensus day where teachers weigh in throughout the process on three areas. One was their voice heard and you can see in this case, they strongly agree that their voice and views were heard throughout the process. The next one is the proposal of McGraw-Hill and where the support for that lies in relation to that being the will of the group. And then finally, just to make sure that it was a consensus process, that it's clear that the will of the group emerged regarding the proposal and you can see in this case all the support with those dots. So 6th or 8th grade concluded that McGraw-Hill is going to be the best set of materials for their group. 10th grade, same process, although I will tell you, surprise to me, the high school groups really got through their consensus, which usually takes a full day, in about three hours. They really dug in and got through the conversations pretty rapidly. But in 10th grade, for their modern, for Modern World History, they concluded that Pearson, Scott, Forsman, California World History, The Modern World was the best set of materials to meet their needs as well as the students' needs. Grade 11 is recommending National Geographics, US History, America through the lens. And then 12th grade, remember, is Econ and American Democracy is taught in 12th grade. So they actually had to go through two processes, two consensus processes, as well as analyze four textbooks through this process. And they ultimately concluded that for American Democracy, McGraw-Hill Education Impact California Social Studies is the best set for their students as well as for Economics, the same publisher for their economics course. So, next steps for us, obviously I'm before you, just to report out to you what the conclusions were of our process. The real work begins after June 11th when, we'll be back to you for approval of the recommendation. Tomorrow through the 10th of June, all these materials and publishers will be on display in the Sanborn Building for public review. They'd like to come in, they're welcome to look through the materials and we'll have some feedback forms for them to provide us some feedback. We'll come back to you the 11th and then pending your approval, we are ready to begin ordering materials June 12th, the day after approval, so that we can get them here as rapidly as possible. What I would like to share with you is really kind of how all of our processes and there's an energy in our consensus, at the end of consensus in the room, that isn't really seen, you know, in these charts. And there's a lot that happens in this entire process that doesn't come out in these, you know, these three questions. But I can tell you, both from the 6th through 8th grade and every of the high school grades, when I would walk in at the end, specifically in 11th grade, there was a real desire to make sure that we take this opportunity because the groups have come together to make sure that how we're using these materials and delivering our instruction is in tandem as well. And there really is a coming together, I'll share another bit and, you know, that Jackie shared with me, you know, there's a break in consensus where the teachers get to go to lunch. We do let them out, you know, as long as we've got enough done. And all of the 6th, 7th and 8th grade teachers went out to lunch together and continued the conversation a bit and then brought that back after lunch. So there is, there really is a building of teams that happens through this process that really is evident at the end. I would be remiss once again not to really, you know, thank and pay credit where credit's due. The amount of work, you all know, that our teachers put into this process and how seriously they take it, above and beyond all the lesson planning and grading that they do is this extra layer of really analyzing and documenting evidence for these materials. They did a tremendous amount of work and did an amazing job. Jackie and Chris, while they were part of the process, were also really behind the scenes as Artosas, helping provide the information we needed to make sure that we're responsive to what's happening throughout the process for the teachers. They did an exceptional job. Our support staff's job has been ongoing as materials are coming in and we're shuffling them around and just held a meeting the other day about when they come in this summer, how we're going to do that. And then our administrators, Mike Halt and Jennifer Padilla, were really involved in the planning of each meeting and even the delivery of the support for teachers throughout it. And then consensus, we had about 15 other administrators participating in that. So huge thanks to all of the work they did. I'm looking forward to coming back to you June 11th after the public review of materials with the recommendation for adoption.
Thank you very much. I have a just quick question. Jackie or Chris, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Can you come up to the mic?
Go on Jackie.
It just has been such an opportunity to be part of this. When John told us, "Trust the process," on the first day, I think all of us looked at him like, "Really? We're going to be out this many days?" But going through it, when he talked about consensus being a celebration, it really was. So thank you for providing this opportunity and I do feel like these are the materials that will best serve our kids in Newport Mesa. So thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your participation.
Yes, I too want to thank you, I appreciate the process and the consensus and I know it takes a lot of time, so thank you to all of those who are involved that are not here, that we don't see. And I'm looking forward to actually going through these because I think it's something that's very relevant to what we're doing right now in the district and where we want to go. What I want to, and I know this all aligns to the state standards, otherwise we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be presenting it. But I just want to make sure too, now is the opportunity when we can adapt some of it to put in some of the things that have been issues with us recently in our district in terms of racism and antisemitism and that will align with the lessons in these various courses. So I hope at every grade level, there will be something along those lines.
Yeah, I think when I mentioned teachers really wanting to come together, that's an opportunity to kind of, you know, seize that moment and make sure that we're also addressing some local needs here as well.
Mrs. Floor.
I'll ask my one question.
I was going to say 14 questions?
No, I have only four. It appears that, I guess this is more of a comment, not a question, so don't count this against me.
I'm tallying as we speak.
It appears that we're moving more towards a K5 and a 6th, 7th, 8th. A true middle school in terms of the math adoption, the reading, the adoption, and now we're looking at the middle, the social studies. Is that, do you see that as the trend that we're moving towards, is the separation at that level?
So a majority of the materials that are created, not all, but that we end up looking at, oftentimes are that 6th, 8th band. And I will tell you that, you know, in conversation with 6th grade teachers, sometimes they feel like they're caught in the middle and really have embraced, you know, connecting to that middle school. So when the opportunities are there, I think we'll take advantage of it. It's not a mandate that we're going to do it this way every time. I'll also say, and I think Jackie and Chris would concur, 6th grade teachers add a lot to the conversation for middle school teachers. And so there's been that learning, you know, I think from the middle school perspective in relation to what really a 6th grade teacher's doing every single day, not just History, Social Studies, but math, language arts and science on a regular basis. So when the opportunity presents, we will definitely do that.
I guess that begs the question with Dr. Navarro is that eventually, could there be some sort of a study session or something about incorporating some of the 6th grade teachers into the secondary school conversation in terms of, I mean, I don't know how that would work, but it seems that there's a lot more commonality because of, you know, the adolescent's brain and that with the 7th and 8th and some of those social emotional issues that are also developing at that age, that conversation about looking at.
Just like elementary teachers add a different perspective when they come and join secondary teachers, I also think it's good for elementary teachers to get the secondary perspective. And so, you know, as John mentioned, when you have these bands of curriculum material, those are good times for them to have some time working on them as a grade span, 6th, 7th, 8th. So there are all those opportunities, but they really have to be integrated into the state curriculum and how they're used in instruction and how they're going to, and what I think, I think Mr. Drake does really well, and he's the torchbearer for this, is providing a seamless K-12 instructional program. So I think, you know, that's something to consider and it also depends on, you know, we do have to work with our principals to make sure that we're meeting all their needs, but it does make a lot of sense. You know, we've got the math bands, we've got the...
You know, we've got the math bands, we've got the social studies bands, who knows what we'll end up with, science. But that is something to consider, and it's extremely logical.
Ms. Anderson. Oops, I'm sorry, you had two more.
I did, but you said I could only have one question at a time.
Thank you.
No, go ahead.
I think that this is wonderful. I'm really excited about this. This is something that's really important to me as a former political science major and history lover, and I would echo what Karen said. Part of the California framework for history and social studies that was updated, actually, in 2016, in addition to the actual textbooks, is to include access and equity. And I think that that's something that's really important that we include as we're bringing new curriculum to our secondary teachers. There's a huge component to it of culturally responsive teaching, culturally competent teachers, respect differences, are aware of their own cultural identity and unconscious biases, and adapt their instruction accordingly. They exude positive dispositions, recognize cultural and experiential backgrounds, that's a long one, address language status, and support the development of academic English. And so I would love to see, as a part of us unveiling new curriculum, that we also would be really cognizant of what the Department of Ed recommends for us as well.
Yeah, and that was also a component that was analyzed, and evidence was gathered throughout, access and equity was also a focus of our analysis.
Oh, wonderful.
Bonus. Any other board members? Okay, Mrs. Floor, you get your rest. Just a couple. One is, I'm particularly interested, I think it goes along with the citizenship piece of it, as well as that, but also the service learning component and the understanding in the roles and responsibilities of ethics within citizenship and the responsibilities. Was that touched on also, and is that part of it, looking at the, sort of the social responsibility of citizenship?
I'm going to try and answer that, but maybe I can call Nicole up to answer that. But I would say yes, when we talk about skills, knowledge, and motivation, I think those three things are working together to try and create that ethical responsibility for our students.
Hi, Cleveland. I'm very pleased to be here and excited to be able to talk about this process. So one of the dimensions that we had for the teachers to use as a way to evaluate the textbooks was the citizenship component, which really aligns to the question that you're asking. And the way that we offered a frame for the teachers is, as John stated, to highlight not only the content, how are students learning about Constitution, legislation, and the kind of nuts and bolts of the history and current practices of our government, but also through the development of skills. So, are students able to engage in the critical reading skills, and the ability to assess and consider multiple perspectives, to develop their own understanding and consideration and interpretation through these inquiry-based opportunities and questions, to develop their own interpretation based on evidence, either in a written format or in a spoken format. And then finally, how do this content and skills provide the habits of mind or motivation for students to be able to engage in our communities, as well as our local and national politics, or at least be prepared for that?
Thank you. And finally, can we get samples? Can we get a sample of the books?
Absolutely.
We're going to go...
They'll be on...
They're on display.
They're on display, but that means I have to walk over there and spend time with it, versus having them at home so I can read through them at night.
We're going to have a committee member...
In the comfort of my home and bed.
We'll have a little muffin and bush party over at the Sanborn. And that was my question, is, are they real textbooks?
Yes, they are real textbooks.
For us people that love to pick up a book and look at them...
There are digital components to them, but they are real textbooks.
Good, that's, both is always nice. Thank you very much. It's very, I'm very proud of the process we go through, because we have teacher buy-in, and when the teachers get the materials, it's not a shock, and oh, no, here it is. Their input is real, and that makes a big difference in implementation.
I have one more question for them.
There's the light.
I just wanted to know, so for grade 12 for American Democracy, it seemed like there was a bit of a mixed response. There were a few that had reservations. I will support, it wasn't as, you know, the sixth and eighth grade overwhelmingly. What was assessed, what are some of the criteria for American Democracy specifically, and what were some of those reservations?
So I was not in the 12th grade room, but what I can share with you is, again, the idea of consensus is will, and making sure that, so it's one of those pieces where, even if it's not what I want, I can recognize that, as colleagues, the will is this recommendation, and I can support it. So that is what basically they weighed in as, is in, you know, I see some reservations. On the other hand, I see that the will is to move forward with this recommendation. They analyze the same components that all the other grade levels did from...
So what were the criteria, what were they looking for, when they were assessing?
So they're looking, they're analyzing the content, they're analyzing the support for inquiry, they're analyzing, I'm blanking off the top of my head, the other...
Literacy? Those four corners?
Those, along with access and equity, assessment, as well as supplemental material support.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you again, very much, I appreciate it. Thank you for all the extra hard work you guys are doing all the time, but especially when it's an adoption year.
We really appreciate you being here.
Yes, because we get to ask more questions. And this was what I was talking about, the change, so we're going to have our informal reports right now, Dr. Navarro.
Okay, I will start off. I'm going to take a little bit of extended time here, because I've got to go back into some history. I am going to share some information about our meetings with the, with Coastline Regional Occupation Program. For those of you that weren't around during the Great Recession, one of the things that was lost was funding for ROPs. We used to get funding from the state, the funding would come to us, but we were just a pass-through, and it went directly to the ROPs. And they were really like a district, they were a state agency. During the Great Recession, Governor Brown decided that we shouldn't have these entitlement-type programs any longer. And so, funding for English learners was taken away, funding for ROPs was taken away, and there were several other programs that were not continued. So he came up with his LCFF formula, where he provides additional funding for equity for those groups that are identified as struggling or disadvantaged. And you know him as the unduplicated count, students. And so, ROPs were left out of that formula. And in that time, there hasn't been any funding from the state. So, our ROP created a Joint Powers Authority. Okay, so now they are funded by the districts. There are five districts. There's Newport Mesa, Huntington Beach Union, Tustin, Irvine, and Saddleback.
We've always had a JPA. It's always been a JPA.
Well, but they're not a state agency anymore, so they only are a JPA. Yes. So, under this Joint Powers Authority, things are changing, and the crop administrators have become quite innovative on how they're going to regulate and actually equalize how districts contribute to the operations of the program. So, we are in conversations about how that's going to happen, and, you know, exactly what school districts will contribute. We, of course, have an interest in everybody being treated the same. Equity, that's important to us, and we'll be having those conversations. But I think it's important for our public to know that ROP really helps us with our pathways, our career tech ed pathways, as our team calls them, our guidance pathways. So our engineering programs, our construction programs, our video programs, we either have ROP staffing those programs with their teachers, and we pay for that through the pass-through that we give them, or we staff our teachers, and then they support our teachers that are in that, on those programs. So there's two types of teachers that work in our CTE program, and I think the challenge is, now that, I think we've come to terms that there will be no state funding, we have to figure out what the funding mechanism is going to be. So, our superintendent from crop has been extremely helpful in getting all the districts together over the past six weeks, and we've been having discussions about what that might look like, and where we're going with that. And so I think it's just important for you to know that that's an important arm of what we do, and how we do things in our career pathways, and that every effort's being made to see how we can accommodate our needs in that, and working with ROP. And I'll be able to give you a better report after we meet this Thursday, I believe. Okay?
Thank you. This is awesome.
Good evening. Well, I'd like to share with you, it is the season for recruitment, and that includes administration. As you know, some of our principals have announced that they're moving on to new adventures and chapters within their lives, so I thought I'd take a moment and just share with you the process of filling those positions, because such a critical leadership role in our district to succeed is that position. And so it really begins with our community forums that we hold at each of the sites, where there will be a vacancy, and we invite community members, we have staff that attend, we also have students that attend, to share with us what they are looking for in the next leader. And so we really ask them four questions. What's working well? What are the strengths of the school currently? What are the greatest needs or critical issues facing the school? And then what are the qualities and characteristics in a leader that they would look for to address those? And then the last one, of course, is the catch-all. Anything else you would like to tell us that you want to make sure that we know and that we consider? So during the forums, we talk about the process, and then we allow people to make comment, and then they also put dots and read others' comments, and so we really get a good sense of what the community is looking for. They can also contribute to that conversation online, which is available on each of the websites. And so utilizing that information is when we really do start our search. Now, there are times that, when we look at the trend and the pattern that we're seeing, and pieces that we know about the site, where we may find somebody internal, and we go, yep, that is a match, that's what should be there. And of course, our superintendent has the authority to appoint someone to a position. Other than that, we use that information to screen our candidates that apply, and then we use the information to actually create questions for the interview process. And so when we do go through the interview process, we have an interpersonal panel, we have a technical panel, those folks come together, we come up with the top candidates, and then there is, of course, the interview at the cabinet level. And so putting all of that information, along with background checks and reference checks, and ensuring what we're hearing and what we're seeing is as close to the truth as it will be, not knowing the person necessarily, then we take all of that and we make the appointment. And so currently, we actually have four positions open at the elementary level. We have Whittier, Sonora, Newport Coast, and Harborview. We held the Whittier Community Forum last night, and it was wonderful to be around the community and have the input from them, as well as students. And I do want to share that they love Mr. Wilcox. And in fact, and I shared this with cabinet, and I just have to share what one little, one student shared with me. She's about second grade, and I asked her, "So what do you like about your principal, about Mr. Wilcox?" And she thought, and she thought, and she said, "He uses kind words." So it was just very, very heartfelt from her, and so we helped her add a few other things to the chart. But we will be having, Monday night is at Sonora, 6 o'clock, and then Newport Coast and Harborview will be Tuesday or Wednesday. We're working on availability, but when that notice goes out, I'll make sure that all of you have the notice as well, if you would like to attend. Thank you.
Mrs. Floor, I saw you...
Is there a way that we could get the information, the qualities? I mean, you're tabulating all of that.
Yes, we do.
Is there a way that you could share? Can you share that input?
I can share it with the superintendent.
Yes, certainly.
Thanks.
Mr. Holcomb, thank you very much. It's a daunting task. Very important, yes.
As you know, this is going to be a very, very busy summer for our Facilities Maintenance and Operations Department. I'm only going to highlight one school tonight, and that's, because we had really good things happen at Estancia High School over the last week. The construction has started on the pool project, it's proceeding very rapidly. The old pool has been demolished, it's being ready to be backfilled. The new pool area, the asphalt is off of the surface, and so they'll be ready to be taking that material and start backfilling it. So that was really exciting, I got a chance to walk around. Contractor, looks like they're very organized, and things are going very, very well with that project. What was nice was being on-site anyway, because we were having a meeting regarding the theater project. There have been a number of meetings with the core group that Mr. Holt put together, and we had been looking at all of the potential locations on the Estancia High School site to determine which ones would best serve the school as a group, and we looked at pretty much every conceivable location. You know, actually, the architect had come in with two initially, but I had directed them to consider every alternative, so that we could eliminate even the ones that looked like they probably weren't going to go very far, but we looked at them. And I was very pleased, it was a very good conversation, and had complete unanimity on a site for the theater project. So the architect is now getting ready to begin schematic designs, so that we can get those designs going forward and bring them to you for you. Hopefully, I don't remember the exact schedule, but it's just exciting to have such a unanimity, and a number of compliments about the work that they had done and the way the process had gone.
It's going where?
Madam...
They moved our buttons. So it's like, Miss, I was watching Mrs. Snell desperately come along like this.
Madam President, one point I wanted to add, Mr. Holcomb's, and you know, I played a little game in last year, last week's Friday update? And I showed you the pictures? And I decided that we kind of had a tie between Mrs. Snell...
I was.
And Mrs. Floor.
I went to school there, I knew it in a heartbeat.
Yeah. But they were the first two to reach out, so I have, so I promised you a couple gift cards, gift cards, so I have a couple gift cards, and a little birdie told me it'd be better for me to get you Starbucks rather than Peet's.
Yes.
Yes.
You know, you know that one of the pictures had the Estancia logo in it.
Okay.
No, but it had Jim Scott Stadium, how could you not miss that? It was a big hole in the ground, it had to be the pool.
Well, I think the key was, how quickly did you read the Friday update?
And I said the text. It said text.
So I have, I will give you your card right after the meeting.
So you say. I didn't see it.
That being said, Mrs. Snell.
I do have a question. Are you prepared to share the location that everybody agreed on?
Sure.
Drum roll. Drum roll. It's not Friday, though, you can't go.
And what was interesting was, this was not one of the first initial locations that folks had imagined. The location that was unanimously selected was the location between the gym and the administration area, where the current drop-off lane is.
The banana lawn.
What many refer to as the banana lawn, yes.
So that's the senior lawn, I think it's the senior lawn or something.
That is one of the ways that...
And a formal skate park for the whole neighborhood.
Yeah, that's true. They can go over to the...
So there were all kinds of things considered about each one of the sites, and there's, there were real opportunities. Folks looked and said, "What an opportunity to really create a sense of entry, and a main entry for the school." It was some exciting stuff, and we really did, I kept asking them, "What if, what if, is there anything that would make you pick one of these other sites?" And the answer was unanimous for that particular site.
So this committee was made up of, like, the drama teacher...
The drama teacher, the music teacher, two outside community members, the site administration from the school, were all part of the committee that reviewed this, and have been for, this was probably the fourth or fifth meeting of the group.
Well, that'll make the neighbors happy. I think they were concerned, we were going to put it over your Joanne.
As I say, there were five sites, so there were all, and each one... As I say, there were five sites, so there were all, and each one had its pros and its cons. And, you know, every site, including this site, has some things that some people will say, gee, you know, I would have rather kept this the way it is. And every particular site had both pros and cons and was really impressive, the way the entire group, much like, we didn't use quite the same process that Mr. Drake uses, but we really worked very hard to make sure that there was unanimity and that everyone felt their voices were heard in the process. And so it was, it was really exciting. And I'm very excited with some of the ideas that we see there. I think that this is going to be an excellent project for the school. Between that and the pool, Estancia is going to see a lot of amazing things in, in the coming couple of years.
Thank you. Yeah, very exciting.
Thank you. Dr. Sir.
Yes, good evening. I wanted to provide an update regarding where we're at as a district with state testing. Currently, we are administering state testing in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. The window for assessment in regards to secondary, grade seven through 12, is March 19th through June 14th. The elementary window is May 7th to June 7th. And when it comes to the different grade levels that are testing, because sometimes you, you kind of get lost, which grade levels are we testing, which aren't, which ones we aren't. In English Language Arts and Mathematics, we are testing students in grades three through eight and 11. That's both for the smarter balanced assessments in, in English Language Arts and Mathematics. When it comes to the CAST test, which is the California Science Test, we administer that test in grades five, eight, 11, and 12. So again, we'll, our windows in the district, in which we'll conclude, is June 7th at the elementary level and June 14th at the secondary level. And it's just a lot of time and effort goes into this and I certainly would be remiss if I didn't recognize George Knights and his team for all the work that they put in to help with the administration of these assessments. So that's a fantastic work that he does with his team. Also wanted to provide you with a quick update in regards to parent choice transfers. Last time, at our last board meeting, I shared with you that we currently have 2,861 students in the district that are on a transfer in our schools today. We just concluded the first round of parent choice transfers. That window for people to apply was January 15th to March 15th. And we just got notifications out, so we hit our deadline. And in that, in that picture, we had 577 requests as a school district and we were able to grant, at this point, 226 of those requests. So that's where we're currently at. Our, again, our second window is going to be July 5th through August 2nd. So if parents missed that window to apply in the first round, there's another window, July 5th through Au, through August 2nd. And so it's not too late to apply and put in for transfer requests, but that's where we're at. That's an update regarding the great work that Terry Russell does with monitoring this process and getting all the notifications out, so my hat goes off to her for sure.
Yes, thank you. Mrs. Black, you had a question from Mr. Holcomb?
For Mr. Holcomb, yeah, but I, I wanted to confer with Karen first because I've never been so excited to see a department, I mean, actually, we've never seen a, a report from the Department of State Architects, you know, come in for the approval of, of the field, finally. And that is like a five-year.
That's happening this summer, too. It was Estancia Day today.
As I said, Mrs. Yelsey, there's going to be many reports on lots of projects over the next few weeks.
Well, this one, I think is, I think we should have a ticker tape parade.
We're going to have a groundbreaking.
Yes, we are.
Oh, we are? Oh, good.
Yeah, because this has been so long coming in, you know, and everybody that participated, you know, for, it's a five-year process that we went through.
And there are still people who don't believe it's happening.
Yeah, right?
Which is why we need to have a groundbreaking.
Yes.
Yeah, so, but anyway, I didn't mean that you, you didn't, because I heard you say one item you were going to comment on. But we just, I think we need to celebrate that and, because I know my friend here is blood-sweating. I wasn't going to hate you, but.
Well, we had a pool breaking, we'll have a groundbreaking.
Yeah, that's great.
Mrs. Bartow.
So I had a question for Dr. Sir. I don't remember if it was last year when I was sitting there or if I heard it earlier this year, but I wanted to just, we don't have an option, right? When we take the CASP test, it's kind of when it is, because I remember the AP tests are right now, the CASP tests are right now. We end up in that problem where they're maybe lower than they should be because the kids are studying for APs. Refresh my memory, maybe?
Help me understand your question.
So do we have a, can we move that testing to a different day or is it just, that's, that's the way it is?
It's a window.
I, I think I can help.
Grammy, I take that.
Yeah.
That's a set date.
There's an AP window that opens, I believe it was March 10th this year, and it ends at the end of this week and the makeups are early next week. Yeah, the AP. The, the state testing has a window from, I believe you had the dates on that, from March 19th through June 14th. So you have that entire window to do your state testing. The AP testing, the each specific test is on a specific day between those times, so they have to do the testing around those.
So the high schools do try, high schools do try to schedule around that.
Okay.
So that they're not having, they're not, they're not having a state test, saying that they're having a, an AP test. So there, there is a little bit of wiggle room and you'll see that each high school has a different testing window as they try to accommodate that and make sure that they're not overtaxing the students.
And in high school, only the 11th graders are tested, so that, that helps as well.
Except in science.
I, I do, yeah, I just, I was remembering before that we were saying that maybe the state testing took hit because of the AP students at the same time, so I was wondering.
I think what the confusion is, it's a general time, so a lot of kids who take AP tests don't really care about.
They're done after.
Okay, thank you. That, that helps, yeah.
And, and with elementary, I know that principals try to hold it off to the far end of that window that we can possibly get all the kids tested through so that that's that much more that they've been taught before the test happens, so. And sadly, that goes along with the calendar that 99, 90% of the state has the calendar ending, year ending earlier, so they, ours, we have a lot of downtime after all the testing.
But that was a good point, that if you've already taken an AP test, you're kind of burnt, so.
No, you are. We've had a lot of discussion about, why don't we do that? It doesn't always, it doesn't go in your transcript, but, you know, it's like.
It's, yeah. Mrs. Flora.
So two questions. One, with the S back, we're already getting the results back in the elementary school because I saw that Christine Anderson is celebrating.
That was last year's.
Was that last year's?
Yeah, we're, we have not received the results.
I have to share that one. And second, 577 requests, 226 were granted.
That's correct.
The ones that didn't get the grant, do they have to reapply or are they put back into the, into the request?
No, that's a very good question. So everyone who has not, where their, their transfer request has not been granted, they have been given a number. So anyone who has put in a request for a school and a particular grade level, they have a number, so they either number one, two, three, four, based on the lottery system that we did in every school for every grade level, if there was more than one person that applied for that specific grade level. So that's the, the first piece to it.
And do they know what their number is?
They know what their number is and what, the, the second piece to it is, they now are the first ones on the waiting list. So we will conduct a second lottery and whatever comes out of that comes underneath the people who are on the waiting list that applied first. So we have our list right now of people on the waiting list based off of our first lottery. We will have a second lottery and once that's conducted, those names will fall. So if there were, let's say there were five people on a waiting list for a grade level at a school in our first round, and then we do another lottery and more people come in, the next person in that second lottery would be number six and however many more applied. And when we finish our second lottery, after both of those lists have all been put together, we begin a waiting list process and we start accepting even more requests throughout the year.
And might I say, the list is a randomly generated list.
That's correct.
It's not first come, first served because that was a misconception of a lot of parents that, well, I got mine in on the third day of the, why am I number 32? Because they get all the names so that everyone has a fair shot that applied within the window and then it's a random computer-generated lottery thing?
That's correct. So we have our first list, our second list, based on lotteries, and you don't have to apply at any given time. There's no preference for when you applied within those, in those windows. But once those two processes have ran and there are waiting lists from both of those two processes that we have, it does become kind of a first come, first served because we know when the people have put in their requests after those two processes have been conducted. So the waiting list will build from underneath those two, based on the time that you apply.
Okay, second question following that. Is it by family or by grade level? Because I, the question because, you have a, a family may have three children, a kindergartner, an incoming kindergartner, a first grader, and a fourth grader. Is it by family? If one, if there's room in the fourth grade, does the whole family get in to the school through the lottery? Or is it by, by grade level and only that child gets in to that school?
So there is, let's say you have three children, you would have to put in for three transfers. And if you are granted a transfer, we do have a process where siblings fall because we do not want to break up families. So that would be another piece to the puzzle in that if a child gets into a particular school, we would have to look at the siblings that follow and inform the family that we can make all of this happen. Or if we can't, we would, we would prioritize siblings to the top of the list and then when there is an opening, they would come in. So that's how siblings work. We do want, we don't want to split up families. That's been a thing very consistent in this district. So if there is space for the other students, we will let them all come into a school at one time, but if not, they will sit at the top of that list until there is an opening.
So they, so they have to fill in three applications, one for, or however many children are going to that school, they have to fill out.
Transfer.
So they get three chances in the lottery?
Well.
Were each child at a school, they would have one chance, but if they have three children and they're in all three different grade levels, they would have to put in for three different transfers. If you have triplets, we'd have to work through that one.
Now done, done. Ms. Anderson.
Do parents, when they're filling that out, is there a reason or rationale or any kind of question like that on that application? I just looked online to try and find it and it's closed, the window's closed, so I can't see.
I thought there, there used to be.
Yeah, I don't, I would have to go back and look. Are there, I don't, there's no review of criteria to have a transfer accepted. If you've put in a transfer for a child at a school, we're not going to look at questions in regards to whether or not we're going to grant one or the other specifically a lottery system. But I'd have to go back and look at the transfer to answer your question.
Yeah, my question is more if there's maybe one school that several parents are requesting and there's a, a specific reason why they're requesting it. And if we know, hey, there's 40 parents that are all applying for one school, maybe that's something that should be offered at that school. So that was, that's kind of why I was asking that question. So there possibly could be a question about reason or?
Well, this is under the state choice law and so you can't consider anything but a random selection at this point. Okay?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to know if it had a reason on our application.
Yeah, we can get you that answer very quickly.
Thank you.
I totally understand what you're saying. It's like, if everybody's transferring to Estancia because they all want the construction class, because that's where they want to be at Estancia, and they're all coming from Corona Del Mar, maybe Corona Del Mar might want a construction class, something along those lines, right? Yeah, okay. Cool. Moving on. Dr. Bowermeister.
Good evening. I have a Human Relations Task Force update. We had our last meeting last week, Wednesday, May 8th, and our human, Orange County Human Relations facilitators, John and Julie, helped develop group norms and working agreements with our group. They also went over stages of group development and reviewed the Human Relations Task Force inputs from the Thought Walls that we did the first time around goals. The summary of the meetings were sent out to the task force yesterday and the summary was put up on the website earlier today. The key outcome of the meeting is that the task force gave the Orange County Human Relations facilitators direction to formulate key themes and topics around their feedback. And so the Orange County Human Relations will create subcommittees from, from these themes or topics. There'll be five subcommittees and members will be asked to select two different groups that they would be interested in being on. In case there's too many people in one subcommittee, this will allow them to pick a second area of interest to help level out the subcommittees. At the next meeting, the Orange County Human Relations Group will go over choosing an issue as a human relations initiative and the necessary components needed for a recommendation to help guide their work. The task force members will then use the Thought Wall input as homework to help guide the work of the subcommittee. And the Orange County Human Relations Board will send out this information and homework to the task force either tomorrow or Thursday. And our next meeting will be May 22nd for the task force. Our next community workshop will be May 29th and we will be partnering with the City of Costa Mesa. The meeting will be at the Costa Mesa Senior Center on 19th Street and the topic will be becoming an ally, promoting respect and inclusivity for all. So that's kind of an update on our two different tracks.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
You're welcome.
Mr. Drake.
I'm back. So just as, as a quick update, you may have been reading some newspapers, last Wednesday, our state approved the health framework. And that's created a bit of a stir. The health framework really encompasses everything that's health, not just sexual health or sex ed. But that seems to be a focus of, of some angst for some people in, in relation to those topics and when they're taught. Kind of in conjunction with that or something to be considering is that the frameworks are not mandates. Frameworks are guidelines to be used to support instruction of, of the different topics. So that's just something I want to make sure is clear, is that the frameworks are just there to support the teaching of health throughout our, our state, but not mandates. However, there is AB 329, which is a mandate that requires us to teach sexual health in one, one time in middle school and one time in high school. It is optional in elementary school. We have decided not to take that option here in Newport Mesa. Our plan is to teach the mandated requirements in seventh grade and then in high school health classes, which we recommend are taken in ninth grade. We do have curriculum for it. Teen Talk will be the middle school curriculum and then we're also utilizing the textbook, Comprehensive Health, to teach that in high school. And for all parents, there is an opportunity for them to opt out of the, the sexual health instruction that takes place. And in Newport Mesa, Dr. Bauermeister is promising me parents will have two options at the beginning of the year when the syllabus or syllabi is sent home, that they'll have an opportunity to opt out then and then a few weeks prior to the actual unit, another notice will be sent home.
That's great. Thank you and very timely. Mr. Lee Sung.
Okay, I'm going to cover a couple of very short safety items. The first one is something we are currently working on that we will have either at our next board meeting or the first board meeting in June, that we would like to extend the availability of an AED at all of our elementary schools plus Harper and Lindbergh. Currently, we have multiple AED devices at all of our secondary schools and this is something that we would like to bring for approval to the board so that we can say and have all of our schools and district sites covered with AEDs. There, recently, there was some legislation that was passed. I want you to know that this direction actually had nothing to do with this legislation. We found this out after the fact. But the legislation actually covers schools that, that have interscholastic athletics, that the law now here in the state of California requires a school, if you have an athletic program, that you have an AED. We had already met that requirement, even though that law does not take it until effect until Ju, July 1st. So we will bring that to you and obviously offer training to our staff. We did training to our principals just yesterday, gave them a nice overview and we will have the, that equipment with your approval installed before students return in the fall. The second safety item is, I mentioned at, at the last board meeting, that we were very pleased to bring back what used to be called CERT, which is Safety Preparedness Training. It's been modified by Brenda Emmerich, who's the Fire Protection Specialist for the City of Costa Mesa's Fire Department. She has been doing training and trains our community in all types of emergency preparedness, but she modified the curriculum that she normally does specifically for school folks. And so we were very pleased that we have held our first two training sessions. These are all-day training sessions. We were able to accommodate 60 participants and we made sure that we offered at least one spot to every. one spot to every single school site, as well as, uh, members here at our Bear Street facility. And I will tell you, I was at almost, uh, both sessions almost in its entirety, and it is a great training. Brenda does a fabulous job. I know Pam has done a lot of training with Brenda, and I was very pleased to see Gary Logan also participate. Gary got to not only participate, but he got to be a victim.
Whoa!
... gentleman on the ground that had to roll over and put...
And he did a fabulous job of that.
Outstanding.
But it's, it's a great training. It, it covers, uh, obviously, emergency preparedness, but also search and rescue techniques, first aid techniques, which, you know, could be used in the event of a, a disaster here at the workplace, but it could be used anywhere. And that's the beauty of it. The participants were great, the trainer was great, and we will continue this training for all of our administrators during the summer, in the month of August, for the same full-day training that the employees got, and we will continue that into the next school year. So very pleased about, uh, this training and the direction we're going.
Ladies and... Sorry, I wasn't paying attention to who came up first, but I'll start with Mrs. Snell.
So I, it would be nice if we had the opportunity to take that class, because we're at a lot of events with...
I'm, I'm CERT trained.
Oh, but not her.
Yeah, I can't, yeah.
Yeah, the rest of us. It would be nice. Anyway, but the, the, my original comment was, I noticed we have a lot of students in the audience, and I didn't, don't know if they know what AED is.
Oh.
Do ya? Raise your hand if you know what AED is.
An AED.
No, they don't. Okay. Anyway, apparently, if you say, they won't hear you anyways.
Fine.
No, I'm kidding.
But they would hear.
Yes.
Did you...
What is an AED?
Automatic...
Electronic...
External... Diffusor later.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's that thing you put on it and all of a sudden, and it's, it tells you.
It's a computer that you put on your body.
It tells you. Clear the area. Walk, stand away. And then it goes zoop, it says, okay, wait. It's really cool.
We're worried about Dr. DiAgostino having an attack, so he's right by one.
Know how to use it. I know. Mrs. Barto.
I just wanted to say, thank you so much. I'm really excited about all of these things. I was gonna make a pun, not intended, about how AEDs were near and dear to my heart, but... But I'm really excited about this.
I, I will acknowledge, um, Ms. Barto and my, myself had a meeting, and she asked about that. And I said, oh, you know, that was actually something I'd considered a while ago, so we brought forth, we had a discussion, and that prompted us to...
Thank you. Um, Ms. Yelsey.
Yeah, I just wondered, who at each of the school sites is trained on using those?
Sir, who?
Who is trained at each of the school sites on using those?
So, uh, the training, first of all, we want all of our administrators to be trained. Anybody who has taken a CPR, uh, class and is certified, AED, uh, training is now part of that. So there's a number of folks who that, who have that. And then we're extending the training. It'll be voluntary, that we will hold at every single school site.
What are our health assistants?
Yeah.
The nurses for sure. But our health assistants.
Oh, yes, yes, they're all CPR trained.
So, okay.
But these, these, these are computers. They really walk you through.
Yeah, but you still wanna know what they are.
You really don't need to know, because it tells you. Put this here.
Right.
Put this one here. Now, stand, push this button.
But it's really good, because somebody that's been trained is a little more comfortable and willing to go grab it and use it.
Need to buy one for my house.
And, and, and who in here does, just in case, 'cause, you know, we thank you good, so we can, we're all safe, 'cause there is someone trained.
Save the lives.
So now, if we've had CPR training...
Then we should go get...
That we should go get an update for that, as well as...
CERT training. Dr. Jacom.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So when I found out that our reports would be moved up on the agenda, I thought I better up my game. So I decided it was show and tell. So I have my, uh, Young Athletes Special Olympics tee-shirt on. Uh, this coming Friday morning is our youth soccer event, I, from, uh, 10 to 12 over at Costa Mesa High School. And, um, anyone from the community is welcome to come. Board members, obviously, you're all welcome. I know that there's a lot of other things going on that day in the district, but, um, it's a fabulous event. Um, my, um, admin assistant, Jackie Gonzalez, does a fabulous job coordinating all of this. And, um, if you're not able to go to this event, the, the next one is Friday, June 7th, and that is our Young Athletes Program. And that one is just a kick. It's just, you know, these, these kids are so cute, and they have all stations where they're all doing their different work, so... Uh, and that one's at Estancia High School. And we're, the school sites have been so supportive. They bring out their band, they bring out their cheerleaders. It's just, they really, um, they really go a long way in, in helping to promote the, the spirit of these events. So that's coming up. We also, um, it, the board members should have received a Making a World of Difference. Um, and for the new board members, we have a Community Advisory Committee, which is a special education, uh, parent group. And, um, every year, we do a tea, and we honor, um, um, people nominate, parents nominate, students nominate, people who've made a difference in their child's lives. So it can be anyone from their teacher. We've had it be bus drivers and aides and, and just different people, and, um, it's a wonderful event. Um, and we have some students sharing their stories. Um, we have, uh, entertainment put on from, from different groups. So again, it's just a, a really great afternoon. It gives you the good feels, which we don't get sometimes enough. So I wanted to make sure you're, uh, invited to that as well. And then kind of on the student services side, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we continue to work to, um, better figure out our mental health, socially, emotional services. So I may not bring it up all the time, but there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes. So, you know, we have the Mental Health Task Force that Dr. DiAgostino, um, chairs, and that next meeting is June the 6th. And so that group continues to meet. There's members of the community on it, and I don't know if any of you can't, yeah, two of you are on it. So, um, I think that's a great committee. And then just within our division, um, we've really been working to, to make sure that we, um, are coordinating all of our resources and using people in an appropriate manner to provide the services that kids need. Um, we have a lot of community partnerships. We have, um, you know, we have school psychologists, social workers, counselors, uh, you know, just a slew of people, and we want to make sure that we are providing those services so everybody knows how to access them, and, you know, we're meeting all the needs. So we're gonna continue to move that forward, and as we kind of put more solidified plans in place or, or tighten up our process, I'll bring that forward to you.
Thank you. Community input, Mrs. Black. Showtime.
Got my cheat sheet. Okay. Um, speaker cards for items on the discussion. No, we're doing none, right?
No, we're doing the first one.
That's closed session. All the action items.
The second one.
Okay, sorry. Um, this is an opportunity for the public to address the board on action items. Consent calendar, resolution consent calendar, and discussion action calendar. Per Board Policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes. Speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers, and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per item. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The board staff or members of the public may request that a specific item on the consent be removed, be moved to discussion action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on the consent calendar. All comments are recorded in full on a meeting video record. When addressing the board, it's helpful if you state your name and address for the record.
Hey. We have one card. Gary Logan.
You survived. Did so great.
I know you came back. Yay! They took good care of you.
Uh, Gary Logan, CSCA, uh, parliamentarian for Chapter 18 here at Newport Mesa Unified School District. Uh, here to address, uh, Shar, friend of our old, the board, everybody else. To piggyback exactly on what Russell was saying about the increased safety training and everything, a handful of, uh, CCA members, Brett and other members of MFT board with Russell, we've really been tackling a lot of the safety stuff that's been going on at our sites, of how we're trying to address a large midridd of all the things that are going on in the news and how we want to try to see our schools move forward to keep our students in a safe and proper environment. And, um, I'm just gonna do a little bit of history here real quick. The first on record, Lakeview School, um, Collinwood, Illinois, March 4th, 1908, 175 students and faculty were lost in a school fire. The last recorded fire at a school where loss of life was Our Lady of Angels School, Chicago, Illinois, December 1st, 1958. So over 50 years without a loss of life at a school of student or faculty because of properly implemented state, federal, and school safety programs. 75 years ago, at 4, at 5:45 PM, the great Long Beach earthquake struck. No loss of life to a student, nobody was there. 25 years ago was Northridge, at 4:31 in the morning, same thing. Nobody was there, but earthquakes, you don't get a time clock when they're gonna happen. So we've been training for them diligently for years, and that's why we're ready for them. Right now, as far as I know, there is no state or federal code mandating for human-caused disasters. You know, so with the guidance of Russell, we've really been doing a lot of discussion. The experts he brought in, I think, have been very top-notch in what the sites need to do, what we need to do as a school district to do that. But moving forward, I would just hate to see us forget the primary two objectives. I would like to see a nice layering of lasagna where the fire, earthquake, and human-caused interactions are all layered together and work in harmony and not overstep each other where we cause a problem trying to prep for something else. You know, 'cause I see that happening at some of the school sites, where we're more worried about what's in the news and we're forgetting our practices and good custodialship from years in the past, 'cause we're complacent, 'cause it hasn't happened compared to what we see in the news. On a lighter note, 'cause I only have a minute or so left, uh, we've been in negotiations with the district and, under the stewardship of Leona. I think everything's going quite well. We're all biting our nails to know what, uh, joint benefit teams comes back with, so we know where we all stand, and then the real fun can start. And that ends my report.
Thank you very much.
That's cute.
Mr. Lee Sung, perhaps you could speak to the continued earthquake and, and fire safety drills that...
Gary's preaching to the choir, first of all. Uh, and we, and we have had some really great discussions, and, and he's absolutely right. The, the, the laws require us to do fire drills monthly at our elementary schools, when really, um, you know, we're, we're pretty good at that.
Yeah.
And, uh, we should be doing regular drills in other types of disasters. You know, we will typically do at least one earthquake evacuation, uh, drill, uh, usually around the great shakeout. We've done that in October. Uh, but what we've been trying to implement here in the district to make standard practice is not only are we doing the required, um, requirements of the state, but also doing, uh, additional types of scenarios, such as lockdown. Uh, there was one suggestion that actually came from the Certificated Advisory Group a week ago, where, hey, we should make it mandated that all of our sites do a reverse evacuation. So in other words, we need to get more sophisticated in our, in our drills and our, and how we practice. So we're not doing the same thing over and over again that we can already do well, but keep expanding. And that's one of the great things about the training, is it was giving these folks who are mostly safety coordinators at their sites, some ideas and, and ways to go. But what we have been doing is kind of upping our game with the different types of drills and different types of scenarios.
Well, I also like the fact that you are doing site-specific drills. Newport Elementary did a tsunami drill. Harborview, which is on top of a little hill, or Newport Coast, which is way on top of a hill, did not do a tsunami drill, because their time is better spent worrying about something else, so...
Knock on wood, though.
Yes.
Don't tempt fate, yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay.
That's fine.
Superintendent's report.
I know, but you get some extra one.
Yes, and I think I covered a lot on the ROP. I will keep you posted on that. And, uh, I do want to make sure, I do want to make a plea that, uh, our staff, uh, consider, uh, attending the Human Task Force, uh, meetings. Um, it's important that we have our team members there classified and certificated. Whether they're gonna be there every night's not important, but to be there to make sure that, you know, those that are doing the work can share their thoughts on any ideas that might come from some of the groups as they're recommending it. So just a plea to our staff members, our team members, to continue to, uh, attend, uh, the, the task force meetings. And, uh, recommendation, uh, is that, well, we really try to advertise, uh, the, uh, community workshop, because the first one was really well-done, and I think this one will be equally as, as well, uh, received.
Thank you. Consent calendar. Move approval of the consent calendar as permitted, but I would like to take a moment to say one word. Okay, but I think...
Second. Second. Or somebody's second.
Okay, hold on one sec, 'cause I have to write. It was moved by Mrs... Flor. Flor, thank you, Flor, and seconded by Mrs...
Black.
Black. 'Cause there was a bunch of seconds that came up at once. Um, discussion, Mrs. Flor?
I just want to mention that, um, as Mrs. Olson said, um, we have two longtime principals, and especially one, um, from Sonora Elementary School. Been there 17 years. Um, my granddaughter was there with the first year she, uh, she came. And again, um, it's a great loss to our district in terms of the, the knowledge and the professionalism that she's always displayed. Um, and then, of course, we're losing Scott Wilcox, too. The other two haven't been, haven't...
Retired.
We don't have them on the list, but they're due to retirement, so, um, wish them well and, um, good luck, so...
Yes.
And I hope they'll be back in some capacity.
In some capacity.
Yeah. Are we, any other discussion on the consent calendar? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The resolution consent calendar, and due to the specific types of resolutions this time, I'm suggesting that we read both resolutions and approve them both together. Does any of, okay. Mrs. Olson, Ms. Olson.
Yes, thank you. So the resolution of 18A, um, as we, we appreciate and we acknowledge other groups of cl... of our, our employees, this resolution recognizes the week of May 19th through the 25th for a Classified School Employee Week. These are, as you know, and you saw our pamphlet that I handed out, um, previously, of the number of employees that we have that support our schools and our students, often the unsung heroes of our system, because they are there for us each and every day, um, doing the work behind the scenes, and some of them have the greatest impact and contact with our students as well. So we really, uh, appreciate their work, and so this resolution recognizes May 19th through 25th.
Thank you.
And then...
Resolution design... The next one, the next one.
The next one.
Yes.
So it, this resolution, um, is an annual resolution that we bring forward to you, because as you are aware, Lincoln Day is observed normally on the Monday or the Friday before February 12th. And then we also have Washington Day that is usually observed on the third Monday in February. Newport Mesa has traditionally moved those dates so that we then have a president's recess. And so this resolution, per ed code, provides for that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion?
Move adoption of Resolution 2305-19, recognizing May 19th to the 25th, 2019, as Classified School Employee Week, and Resolution 2405-19 designated the observance of Washington Day on February 17th, 2020, and Lincoln Day on February 18th, 2020.
Second?
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Flor, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Roll call vote. Ms. Matoye? Yes. Ms. Flor?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Barto?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Cool. Discussion action calendar. Dr. Navarro?
Yes, so we discussed the July meeting date and agenda prep with the members who were at agenda prep, and the recommendation was to come back with the original date as presented. So that is the recommendation.
I need a motion and a second, and then we can discuss...
Move to approve the proposed board meeting dates for July 2019.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Yelsey. Okay, discussion, and last time I had, oh, that was board reports. I was just brought back because we discussed this July 16th date because we had a couple board members, and then in, I'll discuss, in agenda prep...
Just the one date. It's just the July.
It's just the one date that's changed.
Just the one date.
In agenda prep, we talked about the fact that no matter what date we were going to move it to because it's summer.
Somebody's going to be done.
This year, we're all messed up. Next year, we'll figure it out so that we know what our vacations are ahead of time. So that was the discussion at that point. Is there any further discussion? There is no further discussion. Easy for a discussion action. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven-zero. Thank you very much. Dr. Jocke?
Yes, President Matoye. Yes, I'm going to call up Dr. DiAgostino and Sarah Coley, who is our coordinator of Student Services. She's here this evening to talk a little bit about this memorandum of understanding we have. So I think it's good to set some context. We have several partnerships within the district, and this is what I was alluding to a little earlier, where we're trying to figure out how they all align and work together, and so that we're providing either social-emotional support. This is a different type of support for other students, but really trying to navigate so everybody knows kind of what they're doing, what kids they're serving, and all of that. So I'll have Phil and Sarah go over a little bit of what this memorandum is, and then we can move forward. Unless you wanted to get a motion and a second before they do that, I don't know how it works.
I want to do the discussion first.
To approve.
You're supposed to do a motion before you discuss.
We should have a motion and a second, and then we can discuss. Mrs. Black moved, Mrs. Yelsey seconded. Take it away.
Thank you, President Matoye, Vice President Flor, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, and Cabinet. As Dr. Jocke mentioned, we have a longstanding commitment in this district to working with partners in our community to provide a variety of supports to students and families. Robins Nest is an organization that ensures to identify at-risk and homeless students in the community, to get them academic and financial and life skills to complete high school and accumulate their diploma. Last year, Robins Nest began working in, at Back Bay Montevista. Some of the things that they have done, according to the interim principal, Mr. Wagner, have overall created a very positive impact on the school community. They have brought students in who heretofore have been on the margins. They've provided toiletries, clothing, dry food goods, and job interview formal wear to some of our students. At one point, they bought a bed for a student who was sleeping on the floor in his garage because there was no room in his apartment, and they've supported anti-truancy initiatives with gift cards and other supports. So this has been a MOU that's in place since last year, since the beginning of the school year. We felt in Student Services that this work was so positive that we wanted to offer Robins Nest the opportunity to be available to other schools if they would like it, and there are some schools that have expressed an interest. I'm going to let Sarah now talk about some differences between last year's MOU and where we are this year.
Thank you. Hello, good evening. So as Phil mentioned, part of the reason for expanding the MOU is that we've been receiving requests from various school sites as well as our school community facilitators just for some additional resources, even though we do have a lot of community partnerships and resources that we have access to. Robins Nest does provide some unique opportunities and some unique services to the students here in the district. So as Phil mentioned, there's been a lot of success with the students at Back Bay. Currently, Estancia is very interested in having Robins Nest come onto their campus, one by providing a food pantry, but then also just providing support to the students. Looking at the previous MOU to now the new MOU, really the main differences are, one, we're expanding from just Back Bay Montevista now to all secondary campuses, but it'll only be to campuses that want those services on those campuses, so it won't be forced. It will be optional, but we want to make sure that we're providing the services to all the campuses that want it. Additionally, we have added that there will need to be written consent for services from the family before Robins Nest will work more intimately with them. All students will have access to the food pantry and to those resources, but if there's anything additional, like the bed that was mentioned, we would be working with the family to make sure that they consent to those donations. Additionally, we've added language in there to make sure that we're limiting the liability for the district, to make sure that that's very clear as far as her being, or the organization being a contractor with us, and so making sure that all of the employees and volunteers that work with Robins Nest are all background-checked, both through DOJ and FBI.
So the position of Student Services is, you know, we really think that this organization has worked well at Back Bay. We'd like to give other schools the option if they'd like to have it. Doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to expand, although Estancia has already indicated an interest in wanting to do that. So our position at this time is we would like you to consider approving this MOU for the upcoming two years?
Correct.
For the upcoming two years. We're happy to take any questions at this time.
Mrs. Black?
Yeah, I just have a comment, and, you know, I already have seen it in action. I serve on the Student Advisory Committee, which is a group of, you know, our students that meet once a month, and our members from Back Bay shared with the whole group, you know, as well as me, that it was, they didn't know what it was, but now the main thing that they appreciate about it is they can mention to their peers, you know, quietly that there's not going to be somebody who's going to come in and assess them and do all of this. And they like the idea of doing that, not anonymously, because, you know, they're just, it's just such a great, you know, program. So it's not a big deal, you know, at the school. So the students really appreciate that. And then they don't have to interview. That was their main thing. That's what I couldn't remember. Yeah, they don't want to interview for that. And then I love Mr. Wagner, always tells the same story, you know, but there's many stories, and a girl had come in, one of the students had come in, and she won, and she came into the office and asked to borrow duct tape because her shoe was, you know, falling apart. And Robins Nest, not only, she was so grateful because not only did they replace her shoes, but they were brand-new, her size, and relevant to what, you know, she wanted, and so it was just really a terrific, you know, story, and they go on and on. So I, you know, I really appreciate that, and I did talk to Mr. Wagner about it, and he said, you know, things are just going as well, if not better, so...
Thank you.
So I'm very positive.
Mrs. Flor?
So two things. One, I know that we have the confidentiality, because I want, that's the critical piece is that we want to maintain the students' confidentiality. So when we have volunteers, will they have to submit to the same Raptor system that all of our, all of our volunteers have to go through so that they're always known whether they're on campus or not?
Yes. The people that come onto the Back Bay campus would have to come onto the campus through the same visitor procedures as any other person coming into our schools. So they would, and because, my understanding is with Raptor, once they've gone in once, the process expedites a little bit because they're on file, so, but yes, they would all have to go through that.
And then finally, the other one was identifying, I know that at Back Bay, they have a closet that they can keep their food pantry, so that's the same thing, but it's a way for, so we're not going to have rat problems, are we?
Correct. Yes, no, that is definitely, definitely a concern.
No rat problem.
So no rat problem, and the items that are put in the food pantry are non-perishable, so we're not talking about fruits and vegetables and things like that that will be in there, but they are maintained. There will be volunteers who come through, one, to make sure that they're stocked, but then, two, to make sure that things haven't expired and that things are fresh in there. And so we definitely make sure that, you know, they're following all of our district guidelines that way.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that with the clause that the contractor has to have all of their people cleared by DOJ is important. So not only are they going through the Raptor system, they've also got to be cleared by DOJ, which is what we have to do with all of our employees.
Ms. Anderson?
It looks like under reporting requirements, the district has quite a few items that we are required as a district to give. So one of my concerns is it creating extra work for our district staff. Is there a way to make sure that it's clear? I mean, this is one from a principal, is one from a school site liaison, and how much information are we, part of my concern is how much information the district is giving to an outside provider just willy-nilly, or is it, what is that process going to look like?
So we're still bound, yeah, we're still bound by student confidentiality laws. There is no, none of these employees have access to the student database, none of these employees, I apologize, volunteers have access to the student database. None of them will have district access to Ares in any way, shape, or form. It's my understanding that no information is specifically collected by or maintained by Robins Nest other than generic information to identify students and support them in job interviews or what have you, but we can certainly report back with additional information. We've been working with Robins Nest all year this year.
We have, and just to clarify, too, with the food pantry and those items, those students are not tracked, so there's no tracking as far as the student came in for shoes or for food, so that's all anonymous, and so we don't keep track of those items. And then for further services, there does have to be written consent from the family. And so we won't be giving out any sort of student information without the parents knowing, and it wouldn't be any information that we wouldn't give to any of our other community partners.
Is there an estimation then of the, I mean, it's, so the provider will also work with principals, the PTAs, the school alumni, so to cover the cost, that's the funding? Is that, so is the funding coming directly from the principals? And is it put on, is it incumbent on them if someone approaches them that, oh, there's an MOU at the district, so I need to be putting money for it? Has that been communicated clearly?
Sure. So that could be for items such as like the yearbooks, graduation, things like that. Robins Nest would be working with the schools. So say the PTA was trying to help a student with the yearbook, and they didn't have the funds for it themselves, then Robins Nest would come in and help to supplement those costs. And so really working in collaboration with the schools to make sure that it's not, you know, Robins Nest wouldn't come in and just pay for something without their permission, but making sure that that was a need and that they were following all of the school guidelines that way as well.
So I think the clarification, and maybe it doesn't read that way, but it's, you know, if the principals identify a need, or the, you know, the activities director or whoever, and they say, you know, Sarah would really like to go to prom, but, you know, she's worried that she won't have a dress or shoes or, you know, be able to cover the prom ticket, that's one that with like permission of the parents, that, you know, if we let that nonprofit agency know that that would be something they would step in and say, okay, we will cover the cost of the prom ticket, and that we'll get a dress, and we'll get shoes, that kind of a thing. So we're not putting out any money. We're just, as we identify student needs, and we know these student needs anyway, these aren't something we're going to have to go beat the bushes for to identify the needs. Our staff know kids really well, and I think that's where it's a, for us, we look at it as a win-win. We have an agency that's willing to help support these services for kids that as a district we're not able to provide.
And our staff is the one that would be contacting the families?
Correct.
Because, and it's not, it's not a burden that, it isn't something staff wouldn't be doing anyway if they had the, if they had someone to do it for, someone out there providing the service, staff would say, oh, good, let's contact, yeah, okay.
You're correct, President Matoye. It's a, it is a standard practice of principals to connect students and families with our community alliance partners. This would be just one other community alliance partner.
So it's similar to the ASB doing an adopt a family at a holiday, or doing a food drive at a holiday, or, I mean, years ago, the Police Association donated and provided the funds to provide Montevista with their caps and gowns, and it was, you know, about a $10,000.
You're exactly right. It's actually a little bit better than the adopt a family. I remember that there was a concern about district employees doing too much work in that area. In actuality, Robins Nest is providing their volunteers DOJ background check, Raptor entry visitor to come in and assist in these kinds of situations. So we, I mean, we see it as a win-win.
It is a win-win.
And it's not, it's not, we still welcome other not-for-profits, and so are we, do we, are you finding that this will become that sort of the template for other organizations to work with? Because this seems to be a lot stricter in terms of real, clear-cut guidelines. Do you see that as a potential template for other not-for-profits in this area?
I think it would definitely be great if we could move in that direction. However, we are still open to our other community partners and how they want to work with us in developing their own MOUs, and so understanding the needs of the organizations and what they're able to provide. But I think we've spent a lot of time both in Student Services, but then also within other divisions, going through, making sure that we were really covered as a district, but then also that the provider was covered. And so I think this really could be something as we move forward, is just kind of like you mentioned, our template with our nonprofits.
Going back to the funding item again, I'm, I think that Robins Nest is providing great services. I'm concerned where it says provider will work with school alumni. What does that mean? What is the reach? Is that, do we have, well, we have a nonprofit partner that is calling alumni? There's just some contractual pieces for me that are concerning. But can we have more, do you know more about that piece?
The piece where it talks about school alumni specifically? No, I can certainly find out more information about that. Some, some schools have a very extensive alumni information database. I think probably Newport Harbor has the most extensive, as I can recall, but all the schools are trying to create alumni databases. I am, I'm not aware of how that would work, or even if it does work. I don't think Back Bay has an alumni database per se.
However, I need to chime in. We do have scholarships and, you know, that they present the students. In the next, you know, week or so, you're going to see that. And what they do have is alumni that comes back and contacts the school and wants to donate, and in that case, then it would be up to that person, you know, to be informed about Robins Nest or other ways. PTA, I know that our PTA past alumni, they've come in and, you know, and helped support that. So I don't think it's something where we hand them the database and say, here, go, you know, nonprofit, although...
But that's, that's, the way that it's written, that's not clear.
That's not how I perceive it at all, yeah.
But that's how I perceive it, so there's, there could be...
Sure, I can, yeah, I can certainly understand the ambiguity. I do know that in the case of Newport Harbor, and I can only speak to Newport Harbor because I worked there for seven years as a teacher, and I was on the foundation as an advisory member, and we were very interested in cultivating that donor base through alumni, is that with respect to that, there was information released, language, that the alumni were very well aware of, of how their information would be used. We can certainly clarify that with Robins Nest to make sure that they use the, any alumni list that may or may not be provided. We can certainly go back and consider the restrictions, the alumni list, but as Mrs. Black mentioned, the use of alumni in cultivating opportunities, resources, and things like that is a longstanding practice, probably not just in our district, but in a lot of districts where alumni want to give back. I know I've been contacted, contacted more than I'd like from St. John Bosco.
You're a staff member, so for, you're a staff person.
Right.
So I think it looks really different if someone contacts the school and says, I want to donate, whereas the verbiage right here could be that the provider is contacting school alumni.
And I agree with Ms. Anderson that as a principal, I don't know that I would want the nonprofit to be calling these people out. I've been, if I said, here's the list, go for it, as the principal, that's different. But, yeah, that can be clarified that?
Okay, so, so, so how about if we just...
I did.
Say, the provider will work through the site principals as needed, and then the site principal can determine if it is a school alumni issue.
Perfect.
Hey, we've got a really strong school alumni, and we have a student who wants to be this. Let's connect them with this alumni. So with your, I would ask for that edit. I think it helps make it clear that the, that the nonprofit has to go through the principal. We take out PTA, and you take out school alumni, because the principals know what groups they have access to through their campuses.
I like that.
So I would, what you would need is a, you would need a first and a second on that amendment.
Got it.
First.
Okay. Ms. Anderson moved that we... Ms. Anderson moved that we approve the amendment on Section 3 funding to work with just principals and cross off PTSA as needed to most efficiently. That's what it'll read.
Yes, how, however...
If you can teach me more, that's good.
They have to agree also.
So, what, it, so, right, we, they would have to agree. I don't see that as an issue with, with, with this or a particular organization. But what I was gonna say is typically, it's the person who made the initial motion that accepts the...
Right, so, so, does Mrs. Black accept the amendment?
Thank you.
We both agree.
Do you agree?
She amends her motion.
Okay, so, the two board members that moved and seconded agreed with the mo- the amendment?
Wanna make sure we're all legal here.
Can you call for them? I was just going to say that, you know, the last time I had count, we had 67 nonprofit supporting students in our district, and we did not know that, you know. And going back to, to Dr. Hubbard's time, you know, I said, you know, we have over 40, you know, nonprofits in our, in our entire community, including Corona Del Mar and, you know, all across. And we're a pretty lucky district to have that kind of support. And when we actually did it, it came out to, you know, over 65, and I think we're up to something like that. So, you know, I think we're, you know, pretty blessed.
Okay. Call for the question. It's been moved and seconded and amended. All those in favor, wait a minute, I'm making sure that this is not a vote. Okay, it's, it's an all, all in favor as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank Robin's Nest for us.
I, we don't have any more. We don't have any more cards?
No, no.
Okay, so, there's no community input on non-agenda item. Board member reports, Ms. Anderson.
Oh.
Mrs. Nelson, please, not me first every time.
There's so many things. Okay, I was able to attend as a spectator on the task force meeting, and I feel like it, this was the first official gathering where the task force was convened and were able to really dialogue with each other, which they were very excited about. And I feel like the conversations were really fruitful and had a wide variety at each table. I love that it was facilitated by a staff member from Human Relations OC. And so, they kind of kept everyone amicable, but also that there was fair discussion. And there are several pieces of information that came out of that, such as the need for civics instruction, K to 12. There was just a lot of conversation about moving the process along a little bit faster. So, if information can be, be provided to the committee, so they can decide and make, they can read through and say, if there's three goals and I need to come, they would like to do that at home rather than doing that where it took 45 minutes as a group. So, there are a lot of really helpful suggestions that I feel like the committee or the task force made. And I'm really looking forward to the ADL's presentation on becoming an ally. I think that's something that is really important. I know the implicit bias was fantastic. For me, I would love to see that for all of our teachers and staff to go through. It was really, it was really wonderful. And, let me see what else. There have been so many things that I've gone to recently. I'm trying to think of, I don't have my list done yet, yeah. Please come back, yes.
Mrs. Bartow.
So, I'm excited to announce that I've completed all of the high schools and junior highs. I've toured all of them. I thought I had five schools left. I have six elementary schools left, mostly in Karen's zone. And I, it's been really great to get to see faces and names and know what I'm voting on by, by viewing them. I attended the Harvard Council PTA Honorary Service Awards, and it was great to see so many teachers and parents who are involved and who do so much and had a nice lunch. And then, finally, I attended the Newport Heights Elementary School Play. They did The Little Mermaid. I have obviously kids at Newport Heights, but it was really cool to see the, the growth over the season. And I was talking to the principal at Mariners, and we were kind of saying how you get these kids at the beginning, and you don't know how they could possibly put on a show, and by the end, it's amazing. So, there's a lot of talented little kids out there. It's great. And that is it.
Mrs. Yelsey.
There's so much going on with everybody right now, so I won't go into all of them. Just a couple of specifics that were pretty fun. Eastbluff held their first STEAM night ever. Last week, it was the same night as the Special Olympics, but I did happen to stop by there, and it was really cool. They actually went around and looked at not only other STEAM nights in the district, but other districts as well to get ideas. And they did all kinds of fun things, and it's more like a carnival atmosphere for these kids when they do this, and the families, because the parents get involved in, in making a little car and then putting it on a wired zip line down and see who's gonna win. And, and Ms. Heron was there making kazoo's out of tongue depressors and stuff like that. So, it was, it was very cool. And then, I went on that night too, as was mentioned before, the Special Olympics. Newport Beach celebrates hometown Special Olympics. This is the second year, and I think it will be an annual tradition. And it's really wonderful. It's at the Civic Center. They do a unity torch walk through the bunnies. Everybody knows the bunnies.
The bunnies.
The whole, the whole walk through there. We did have the drum line from CDM and the sparkle cheerleaders, which is a, which was a great addition. Everybody loved it. Newport Rib does the food. They have a mini hoop shoot challenge. So, you buy a team, and my team was, once again, Candy Borella, Bonnie Hinton, and Carrie Adams. And we had a special athlete on our team, and we just, he was really good. So, we just let him take all the shots, and he did, he did really well. So, it, it's a really fun event. I encourage next year, if people have the opportunity to come out, because it's a very community-oriented event. Michelle Gili is the master of ceremonies, does a fabulous job. And I'd say there were probably 300 people out there, at least. Dana came for a while.
I hiked in my, I always keep tennis shoes in my car, always, always. And I couldn't find them, so I was in my heels, but it was still an easy walk.
A really great event.
The drum line kept you going.
And then, I was at the scholarship dinner. I know we have a Les Miller Dinner for the scholars from Estancia and Costa Mesa this Thursday. Last week, I believe it was last week, was a scholarship dinner for the kids, the top 15 scholars each from Newport Harbor and CDM. And once again, it's so great to see out of all these kids, 95% plan on going into some career in STEM. And, I mean, like astrophysics and, I mean, all kinds of things, but really well represented. So, and I think that's a testament to what we've done a lot with our science programs from the elementary schools, tracking through the high schools, so that was nice. And then, I was not at the task force because I was at Speak Up Newport, which also had a discussion on, or, or a panel on tolerance and racism. And our own very distinguished Dr. DiAgostino was on the panel. He did a fabulous job. Actually, people in the audience, because I've gone to other of these Speak Up Newport, said that was the best one they've ever been to. And he did a fantastic job. There was someone from the Islamic Studies Program, and also a rabbi was there. So, it was very good. And then, Shar and I were both at the class act for Harborview last week. Tchaikovsky is the composer this year that they were honoring. And that's obviously super fun, and to have a free concert from five members of the Pacific Symphony is pretty nice. For us and for all the kids and their families, so that was great. That's it.
Mrs. Black.
Okay, so, thank you to Harvard Council. It was Old Home Week, and, and it was, it, it felt like, you know, probably the most attended in a while. And, and everybody said, oh, no, we always have a couple honorary service awards at every school, so... That's right. Right, right. It was fabulous. It was really well done. And we also gave us a lot of time to visit, which was also really nice. It was Old Home Week. And then, also, I couldn't attend the, the last, actually, your task force, but I did go to the Community Workshop, Understanding Implicit Bias. And, and it's about two hours, I think we, the community, there was probably 30 people, you think, you know, possibly there. But I learned something from that. It was fun, you know, process, but, you know, we all have unconscious biases. And, and that actually influence our experiences that we are not aware of. So, it was a great lesson, I guess. I, I wouldn't say, it was actually, you know, we kind of walked into it blind, blindsided, really, because we didn't know when they were having the different, they put posters up and, and put age and gender and whatnot. And then, they asked specific questions, and then you went and you stood there. And then, you know, somebody from the group, you know, would speak on everyone's behalf, or individuals were compelled to talk about it. And as I was going through it, I was kind of surprised of my own bias and women, no. But, but I, I was kind of surprised by that, how important that was to me and how proud I was to be a woman, you know. And so, anyway, so that, I really encourage you to go to the next one, and the community one. I know that the task force is working hard, and they're gonna probably get things more ironed out and organized. So, I'm not 100% sure when the next community, I thought I wrote it down. Oh, April 24th, but is that the? May, I mean, I was looking at the old one. Okay, and then, also, I don't know if you know, but we have a new CSBA delegate amongst us. And in region, or in Orange County, it's Region 15, and we are elected by our peers, other board members in Orange County. And they elected Shar as our second delegate. So, she will be attending this Friday, so that's why we, well, I won't be at all the functions on Friday. But, well, I have to work too. Nobody's supporting me, so, before I leave for the weekend. But anyway, one of the things that our CSBA does is they choose different items to champion and work with our legislators on. And so, the past two years, we've been looking at fully funding and working, understanding how it, you know, for this instance, it's special ed, and how it impacts our district. And I don't think it's ever not impacted our district as long as I've been on the board. So, so they have some questions, you know, our total enrollment, you know, how, how many students? And I said we had 2,500 plus, you know, to- total students. Our general fund is a little over 300 million. And the interesting thing that they were asking is our federal revenue resources for special education is we receive from the feds, 3,771,153. Okay, that's what we receive on mandated costs for our special needs students, kiddos. For federal mandated cost reimbursement, we get zero, okay, from the federal government. And in our contract that has been around before I was ever on the board, we are supposed to be reimbursed up to not, not to exceed 43%. So, I've been serving on the board since the mid-'90s, and the most we've ever received, ever, in the history, is 19% reimbursement. And that's because we sicked Serene Stokes and Judy Franco on our representatives in Washington, DC. And so, we, actually, it was one and a half years where we got some extra, but the average has been 11%. So, when you go to the state revenue, we get 11,323,779 and zero reimbursement on mandated costs. So, what that means to Newport Mesa is that regarding our special education plan, only special ed, transportation costs, they encroach into our general fund, unrestricted funds. So, that's our general fund of $40 million. And so, it would be nice to educate them, but they're not in office long enough for us to educate them about public finance. So, and I'm being facetious, but I have met with countless. How many of you met with? I mean, we have gone, you know, countless, and so, we, I asked Sarah, thank you so much, and I can't believe you just pulled this off the top of your head. We were prepared to, Shar and I, and Martha had to work all week on it, but... I know that this is, these are gonna be good feedback for, you know, for our breakout sessions. And then, when we meet with our legislators, we will hopefully try to educate them. So, that's what we will be doing, so that, and congratulations, Shar. And then, are we gonna, do you want me to report on our meetings now, or do you wanna wait till after?
Let's go through this and then we'll come back, because there's so much. Mrs. Plour.
So, a couple of things, well, more than a couple, but anyway. Again, PTA, thank you very much. I mean, I can't, you tabulate the hours, so eventually, I would love to hear the report on the number of hours. Perfect. Because, and the numbers of hours that our volunteers give in our schools through the PTA and the PFOs is just phenomenal. Wanted to keep you guys up to date on a couple of things. The Board Handbook is coming along. We have the last piece, which is the protocols and the norms that were, were done by, that helped through Deb Dudley. They're in a different format, so I'm gonna send you two different formats, because the, the three of us have met. There will be some appendices, so we're collecting all of that, and it'll get out. I wanted to report that also, I went to the OCDE Board of Education meeting last Wednesday, and I have a bee in my bonnet, because they're not following the Brown Act, clearly. They have a set time for a public comment, it's at 12 noon. Their closed session starts at 10 o'clock in the morning, and then they have some presentations or resolutions at 9 o'clock in the morning. And the public is prevented from actually speaking on that. So, I went and I did talk, I put my card in, and they said, oh, it's not till 12. And I said, oh, no, 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 au contraire. A board member, you know, a member of the public is, can talk on any agenda, on the agenda, and if you can't talk at 12, you've already passed the, the closed session. So, and I know Steve Smith is in the audience, and he'd appreciate this, so I went up there and I talked to them, and they said, oh, okay. So, they were just sort of like flabbergasted at the fact that they're not doing it. And I had researched, I had talked to one of our attorneys, Tony DiMarco, and he sent me some information. They actually had had their own Ron Weinkert last year put together a presentation for the Brown Act, but clearly, this Board of Education tends not to follow that Board of Education. So, I did, I impressed upon them the fact that they were completely out of compliance, and it was illegal what they were doing. And met with a couple of them afterwards, both thanked me, and then one said, I didn't know that. And I said, Marie, yes, you should know this, because you could be, you could be in trouble with the district attorney. And she goes, oh? And since then, I have received notification that they have directed their attorney to research the item. So, we'll see. We'll see.
That's called School Board 101.
A couple of things that, that, I mean, it's just like, things are just falling into place. I went to the Girl Scout, which is the Girl Scout breakfast on, on Friday morning, and it was all about Girl Scouts, but their, their speaker was Elle Sung Richardson. She happens to be the dean of the UCI Law School. And her expertise is on bias and implicit bias. And so, her whole conversation was in regards to implicit bias. And she was speaking primarily about gender, but it applies everything. This young woman is, is an Asian African-American. And she encouraged all of us, and I would encourage us all to do this, is to take the university, Harvard University implicit bias test, because it's a free test, it's part of the project implicit. And she said, even I, taking that test as an African-American Asian woman, still had an implicit bias in favor of white men. And she said, I've taken it multiple, multiple times. But she says that you have to do a conscious effort all the time. And, and she was talking in terms of, for example, in our hiring practice... And she was talking in terms of, for example, in our hiring practices, when we put out job descriptions, and we say, team builder, consensus builder, all those soft skills, that encourages a woman to apply. And there's a bias, an implicit bias towards women, because women are known to be team builders, collaborators, all of those things. But when you say things like leadership skills, you know, strong communicator, those are implicit biases towards men. She also said that the interesting thing is that a man, I want you to talk about gender, a man, when you're taking a job application, and a man is applying for a job, you only have to, a man will only, even if he meets one of the criterias, he'll apply. A woman will have, believes that she has to meet all, every single one of the criterias before she will apply. So it was just, it was a fascinating conversation about how we consciously or unconsciously do things. For example, I know that there was University of, American Association of University Women did a study years ago about who you call on in your classroom, that most of the time you call on a man first, you know, a young boy or a man. And so she, she actually consciously has to address these implicit biases that we all have. She said, they're good or bad, you know, they're not necessarily all bad, but that we have to make conscious efforts on that. So she would be wonderful to do it. And there is a, there is a program called VMWare that does, that you can run through your performance evaluations, and actually identify and eliminate some of the biases that you, in terms of words and how you evaluate an individual. So I thought that was interesting. So that goes into, the next thing was, I've attended several of the Human Relations Task Forces, and I'm asking the question is, is it diverse enough? Are we, I haven't seen many African Americans on our, our Human Relations Task Force, and I know that we opened it up to everybody, but I think that we really need to make sure that we have good representation, and that may mean that we need to-
And more students.
More students, and identify some individuals that we would like to get on there, to make sure that it's really truly representative.
To encourage volunteering, because?
Encourage volunteering, or anything. It is voluntary, but I think there was some caveat that if we didn't have something, I think, Kurt, you said that, that we would, we could actively recruit some people, but anyway. And finally, this is a plea from a longtime board member, is to be safe and be smart. Our next meeting is after Memorial Day. And we have had tragedies within this district with our students, because they've been stupid and doing stupid things, especially right at this, this critical time, when they're celebrating, finishing off finals, AP, you know, they've gotten into their college of their choice, whatever it is, sometimes they do stupid things. And Dana and I have, have served on that position, where we have had to grant and give diplomas to parents of deceased children who were, who were killed. So I am making a plea again, I do this annually, please be safe, be smart, and, and take care of yourself, especially over this weekend, because this is, this is the time of year that I, we really dread it, we really dread it. And that's my report, and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Snell.
Okay, first, I wanted to thank Harvard Council, PTA for their luncheon, but also for honoring Heidi Beth, who is an angel and a star, and I'm so glad you've still got her hooked in, even though the kids are all graduating this year, so that's, I know, so good for you. I attended with a few people here, the All District Senior Art Show, that was over at Hurley. It was a great venue for the art, because it's all black, and it was just really smart-looking. And I tried to buy a couple pieces, but-
They didn't want to sell them.
They didn't want to sell them. But anyway, but something really interesting is they had a DJ there, Teek Zachary, who's a senior at-
Costa Mesa High School.
Costa Mesa High School. And he was showing me how, because I'm like, I thought DJs just played music, you know, I didn't, he's got this huge board, and it was really interesting how they, you know, he'd say, listen to this, and they combine the two, well, you guys probably don't know about this, but I found it really exciting, and he is, actually got a gig in Finland?
In Amsterdam.
Oh, Amsterdam, okay, mother's worried, Amsterdam, yeah. Anyway, for the summer, and how great. I mean, that was great that it was part, because the art exhibits about, you know, the painting and the ceramics and everything else, but it was great to, to see that. The, I went to the first, I'm told this is the first Estancia Zone Music Program. Normally, it's the all-district program, it's really huge, so Estancia Zone decided to do their own, and it was, it was really fun. And kudos to McFadden and all the music teachers that were there with him. Also saw Jungle Book, which was hysterical. Nick St. Royal Production at Victoria, and Spamalot, which was, oh my gosh, so funny.
It was perfect for middle school. It was middle school humor at its best.
Yeah.
Monty Python nailed it.
Yeah, Dr. Navarro, you would have really enjoyed it, because that's kind of your-
It's very punchy. It's very punchy.
The, I just heard on Good Morning America, I had to tell everybody this, that Planet Fitness is doing free for the summer to fifteen, for 15- to 18-year-olds, free workouts, you can go, and May 15 through September 1st. I thought that was really kind of cool. So I was going to tell the students, but they left. And the Soy Fiesta, as usual, was wonderful. The keynote speaker was Manuel Chavez, who is an Estancia graduate, and-
Council, councilperson.
And councilperson, well, first Estancia graduate. I'd also like to suggest, since these report, our reports are at the end of the evening, and we're all getting tired, that it would really be nice, I'm not really getting enough inter, interaction with some of the meetings that you all go to. I don't really know what goes on at your meetings. I mean, I'm sure it's good stuff, and once in a while, I know Martha's really good about sharing what goes on at her meeting, but if we all sit up here and talk for 15 minutes, it would take forever. And I, so I was just going to suggest that if, especially some of the meetings that, I mean, maybe you don't want to share everything that goes on, but maybe just some, wouldn't you like to know what's, yeah?
Well, Mrs. Snell, you did that from the Art Commission meeting we did, and I believe we got a ton of great feedback from the rest of the board of, wow, how nice. And so I think when, when multiples of us are at a meeting, look at each other and say, hey, you want to write this up? Because it really is nice to just hear the report.
It's so helpful. I mean, I was listening to Dana with what she, you guys are going to talk about at CSBA, but it was like all these numbers, and it was, you know, and I'm kind of starting to, we've been here since 3:00, so it'd be nice to, yeah, to find out what goes on at these meetings, because some of them are just twice a year or something.
You know, and I have minutes from the Sports Council, and the only problem is that, you know, Costa Mesa United Sports, I'll just email those to you.
Okay.
Because I'd much rather, if I, I couldn't do it, I mean, these are my notes. I mean, the only thing I, I would do, or say, and I don't want to put in writing, is that Tim Holcomb is fantastic, and-
Why wouldn't you put that in?
He is putting, literally, he is putting together, so I announced it, so you're, we're stuck, we're on the hook now, that doing master plans for any improvements, or any repairs, or anything in the future related to, you know, our, our schools, I just think, you know, it's a good way to start it, so that it isn't, you know, because everybody and their mother's going to find something that they can donate, volunteer to our school, and, and this way, if we have a master plan, then we can show them, you know, and that, hey, it's already in the works, or whatever, so.
Yeah. And again, I'm not, I'm not talking about, that would be great, because they do do minutes, but I'm not necessarily talking about a blow-by-blow. I'm just like, if something that you're just, just what you're discussing, and what-
One-page bullets, short?
Yeah, a paragraph even. I don't know.
I think that's a great idea.
I'm happy to do that.
Before I go back to you, Ms. Anderson, I'm going to take my turn.
Yeah.
I'm just giving you a heads up.
Oh, I just have my legislative, because I was saving that.
Well, we're going back to that.
Yeah.
First, I want to thank the STEP program, if you can extend our thanks. They once again prepared beautiful flowers for us all. We don't, we have, every board member has a beautiful mason jar of flowers, and I don't know what they do to those flowers, but they last.
They last forever.
They last, I know, there's something magical in them, they last beautifully. And in addition to what the other board members reported that I was there at, we did the groundbreaking at the Boys and Girls Club. And Ms. Anderson stuck around to actually do the digging and the groundbreaking, but I had another commitment after that, so I got to hear all the good stuff. And it's pretty amazing that Robert Santana has come into this entity and created such a great partnership for the four cities that he represents in Testan, Irvine, Santa Ana, and Newport Mesa, with the Boys and Girls Club, and our very own Lou Yantorn branch, which is over on Testan, on the backside of Kaiser.
Harlan Anderson was the-
Harlan Anderson was there. And, yeah, sorry, that's a digression. Anyway, it was really nice to hear it, and that the Boys and Girls Clubs of America fundraised, he fundraised $5 million for a $6.5 million project before the ground was broken. And Mrs. Arguros, and I know it starts with a Julie, or Julian, stood up and at, at the meeting, gave a wonderful speech, and said that she came out two times to view it, and two times they checked, and it was casually mentioned that, boy, wouldn't it be nice to get some money in a big lump sum, so they didn't have to go to the bank? So she said, so I will write a check for $1.5 billion and let you finish your project. So that means it's fully funded, change orders notwithstanding, and that's, it's just a testament to the people in our community that are willing to help the children of our community, and it just, it gives you goosebumps. Mrs. Black was there, we, it was, it was a beautiful, it was a beautiful morning. And then I also attended the Orange Coast College groundbreaking for their aquatics facility, and it's not fitness training, but it's, it's maybe that. Anyway, over on Orange Coast College, and if you've been to Orange Coast College, you probably can't walk five feet without tripping over another project that they're doing. The planetarium is absolutely spectacular, and I know they're working with our students to send, I want to think, 5th grade is all going over to the planetarium, so something should be coming, but that's, they told me about it, so I didn't say we should do this. But the brand-new planetarium is a beautiful building, and they're building dormitories, and they're building a new student body center, and now they've got the aquatics center, and there's, I think, a history social science building that's coming, I mean, the build, Measure M is doing wonderful things at our Orange Coast College. And why that's important is because children can go to college by going across the street, and signing up and getting the most wonderful education for their first two years of, of college, save their parents some money, and if you decide you don't want to be the English teacher you thought you wanted to be, you can change your mind and not make anybody go broke. So it was pretty amazing. Now, did Ms. Anderson and-
Yes, just very quickly. I also attended the Jungle Book Play at Victoria, and it was really wonderful to see a parent volunteer help as well, Kathy Walker, she did a fantastic job with all of the monkeys.
The monkeys were amazing.
There were like fifty of them.
Yes.
And then also for the Harvard Council, PTA, the thing that for me was really cool, I got to sit at the Chrono Damar table, and so that, I, it was a wonderful experience. And I particularly loved the honorary service awards, so Heather and Daniel Arduina got it for Costa Mesa, and they just give so much to that campus, and so it was really cool to see them honored. And then also, there's Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you for all of our teachers that give tirelessly. That was something that was really cool to be on, on some of the campuses, dropping some thank you notes, so thank you for our teachers for all that they do. That is it.
Okay.
Committee reports.
Committee reports, go. Misses Bartow.
Okay. So, okay. So I'm going to do my legislative report quickly. 1507, which was charter schools have to operate in the district that they apply for, if at all possible, is passed, so that's good.
Oh, good.
Oh, it did? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Good.
15, yes. 1505, so on, a lot of this stuff happened on the 8th as well. So 1505, which was the charter schools to-
Good, good.
I mean, it's so hard to say, they can't appeal to the county, but it's not exactly, I mean, yeah, they can't appeal to the county without, and then come back to us without completely resubmitting their proposal, process. 1506, which limits the charter schools in general, is moving along, actually, it's without amendment, or very few, so it's, that's the, yeah, that's a good one, too. That will limit it to the 2020 number. Okay, and then AB 1303, which was the funding for career and technical education, that's moving along as well, that's set for, recommended for approval, that's a big one. Governor Newsom completed his May budget revision, and the nice thing is, a lot of times, you see things come back shorter. In this case, the numbers stood pretty well with the addition of adding an extra $19.2 million across the state for special ed. 380- Is that wrong?
No, I apologize, but Shar was like, yay, and I'm like, no, it, because the way it's anticipated to go out is LCFF funding, which means we wouldn't see it. So we want to support AB 428, which does specialized funding.
So I was about to amend that, so for the state, which might not come down to us, yes.
Okay.
And then 389 million in school, again, this is all the LCFF number. The focus continues to be on computer science and the longitudinal, it's getting late, longitudinal data system, which Governor Newsom proposed to track students all the way through, which I think is going to be helpful for what, for outcomes. And then, interesting, if you guys know about first five, you know that the number's been decreasing every year, because it's the tobacco tax, and that has decreased. So now, $80 million from the cannabis tax fund will be going towards other early childhood care, for subsidized childcare for income-eligible families.
Oh, that's great.
15, did you say 1505 passed, or it's-
That's the one that we already, no.
1507 and 1505.
No, 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 sorry, 1507 passed, 1505 was referred for approval.
Okay.
Yes, so, well, that's scheduled for, I think, the 16th.
That's the one we want.
That's the, that's the big one.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's the big one.
No amendments on that either? I don't think, see, that's amazing, yeah.
Oh, me?
Mrs. Snell.
Okay. And this is something I could have just put in a paragraph. The Newport Mesa Schools Foundation meeting, they're, they're starting the reading of the grants. They've, they are working and will have the grants online by June, so that teachers-
The applications?
The applications online, so that teachers can fill them out over the summer, and they can do it online. And also, they've simplified the form a little bit, which is nice. They're always looking for grant readers, if anybody wants to do that, or you know anyone. And the next, February 6, 2020, that's the next grant meeting, they've already scheduled it.
The Grant Dinner.
The Grant Dinner. So, yeah, you know me, I like to schedule way out there.
No kidding. And then, I apologize, I forgot one little thing. Last week, I was in DC and met with Congressman Ruda, and he was so great, he gave me 15 full minutes of his undivided attention.
Wow.
Yep. And then his staff, who just happened to be his educational policy person, different person was supposed to go on the tour last minute, this guy was the one who gave me the tour, so we walked around, and he gave me a two-hour, really lovely, wonderful tour. Um, and now he knows who to call if he has any education questions.
That's great, that you made that connection.
Yeah.
Well done.
Going down?
Oh. I'm not going to do the, um, the Arts Commission, because y'all got-
We got it. Um, Mrs. Flor.
Yeah, um, ROP continues, wanted to remind everybody that, uh, May 23rd at 4 o'clock is the Distinguished Student Awards, where they give scholarships out at the Robert B. Moore. Um, we generally have lots of award winners on that. And so they'll be handing out, um, several scout, several dollars, thousands of dollars worth of scholarships. Um, also continuing on with, like, Dr., what Dr. Navarro was saying, um, the ROP is going through a significant, um, change. Um, we contracted with School Services, and it got bigger than we thought, because we're dealing with five separate districts, five districts that are funded completely. Three are, uh, four are unified, one is a high school dif- district. Um, all, all of the districts except for Irvine are suffering through declining enrollment. So you have schools like, districts like Saddleback that are losing thousands of students. They've lost a thousand students every year. Um, and again, reminder, um, the ROP has been in existence for a long, long time through a joint powers, uh, as, as agreement. Um, but it was always funded for the 11th and 12th graders. And as greater and greater emphasis has been placed on capstone projects and, and serving, um, serving the need, and now that it's on the LCFF. And so, there is a disparity between the five districts. In the past, um, if a district wanted a class, it was, it was funded. Um, we are an unusual district, we are the only ROP in the state of California that has what we call directly, um, indirect or contract teachers. Most ROP, in fact, all of them except us, all the teachers are ROP teachers. That they are hired by ROP, and they provide ROP classes. We actually have three different types for your information. We have the ROP teachers, where our teachers, we hire the teacher. Um, the ROP hires the teacher, and they are placed in, in our, in our schools. So Dwayne, who is the ROP, or Yuki, for example, um, at, at Estancia High School, is a ROP teacher, and teaches, um, multiple classes. Then we have, um, ROP teachers that are hired, um, that are our district's teachers.
Certificated.
And they're certi- they're all certificated, every single one of our teachers is certificated. But there are, are teachers, and, uh, we contract, and, and they are, they teach an ROP class. For example, Sarah Pilon, who is our cul- one of our culinary teachers. She's a district employee, and she hires. So the disparity between that is, teacher contracts vary from school, from school-
District.
District to district. Terms of the placement and all of that, because they are district employees. Then, so that's another type of teacher. Then we have the third, which is where ROP hires a district teacher to teach an ROP class. And so those teachers are actually our teachers, but then we, we buy, we buy a half FTE, you know, a fifth of an FTE or two, you know, whatever it is. So there's a, that is a, that is a hybrid system. The bottom line is, we were hoping to get most of this done by, um, June. It is not, so we've approved, uh, an additional contract to go through Janu- um, through December of this year with School Services, who is trying to sort this out. Superintendents have been really wonderful in terms of being very candid with the ROP. Um, now the board wants some additional information, because we're at the hi- the higher level. Um, and so we are going to be meeting specifically with her, and we're going to be meeting with our superintendents, um, as a group. So their next meeting is, I think, May 23rd, um, and we're going to be proceeding on that. But there's a lot of moving parts and moving pieces. Um, for example, in our district, the ROP hires career specialists. That's part of our overhead, that we place a, a, a career specialist in the district. Districts tend to forget that we have additional employees just besides classrooms. Um, and so those are part of, part of the ROP program that, that we provide, so we do up. So anyway, so there's going to be a lot of, lot of conversation going on. But we have an agreement with all the districts so far to, to hang in there for another year at least. Thanks.
You're welcome, Ms. Anderson.
The two committees that I went to, um, were the Wellness Committee, um, and Dale was very excited. There is now officially a Newport Mesa Unified Student Wellness Policy, and it is listed on the website. Um, and so they're very excited, it's in partnership with Orange County Department of Ed, and there's just very clear protocols that go into that. Um, also discussed at that meeting were the Safe Routes to School. May 8th was the National Bike to School Day, and Victoria and Kaiser participated in that and had, um, great attendance. So we're hoping for even more for the Fall Walk to School Day. And then, um, they also discussed the Summer Food Service Program. So meals will be provided at no cost to children up to 18 years old at Ray and at Costa Mesa High School for breakfast and lunch, and at the Costa Mesa Library for lunch only. And one, um, thing that was really important about this USDA program is it's for any child. They don't need to be a Newport Mesa student, they could just show up. Um, and so that was great. Um, in conjunction with that, um, some of the interns who are working for Wellness, um, were talking about food waste and, um, discussed what it would look like for the cafeterias to collect unused food that no one had touched, and prepare and wrap those as meals to go, particularly for the weekend. So it deals with food waste and also students who don't have enough food. Um, so that was the highlight for that. And then, um, there was also, I also went to the DIAC, um, meeting, which was, this was one of the best ones that we have had. Um, it was on awareness of social media. They talked about online bullying, online predators, things to look for, how to lock down your student's account, and really practical ways to do that. Um, one of the tech tosses has two junior high, she has two students, junior high and high school, and so is really learning as she goes, and really has, she has real-time experience um, as to what to look for and what to lock down for students. So, um, the parents had a ton of comments and questions, it was really, really wonderful, so.
And I was on the, as was Ms. Anderson, we're at the Chamber Education, Costa Mesa Chamber Education Committee, which is giant focuses on the Les Miller Awards Ceremony, which will be Thursday night. And this one's going to be at, um, Hurley.
Volcom.
Volcom. I had that wrong. We already did Hurley for the art show.
Yeah, we did.
Volcom for this, so I'm really excited about that, because that'll be fun to go.
But the question is, are they opening up their employee store?
They are opening up their employee store at 4:30, so that we can go and buy Christmas presents early, so. I said, oh boy, does that mean we get to all skateboard, ha ha? And they, no. So it'll be, it'll be a fun venue, and it's always exciting, as is the Newport Beach Awards. It's, it's, I always say this, it's smile season, and it's really fun, because all the, most of our news right now, from now, is happy. And I made so much notes. I do believe, is there anything else for the good of the cause? We didn't say so at the beginning, but, um-
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.